All right, here we go.
Yes, they are.
I call this board work study meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at six o'clock PM on April 11, 2024. For the record, board members present are Sally Derrick, Tara Herbachik, Carol Lennan Adenius, Tim Brady, Iliad Garza-Romas, Randy Shatvin, and Cassandra Hatfield. We constitute a quorum and make it that business on behalf of the district. The next item is audience for guests, persons who wish to speak. During audience for guests, must have completed a form for this purpose and placed it in the history of the patient prior to opening that meeting. Based on the cause of the need to be local for this meeting, keep your comments with consent as opposed to agenda items. This can either be have been in the history of the patient prior to opening that meeting. All right, with no one wishing to speak, we will proceed to our next agenda item. Item number three, work study and discussion items. So, right, A, no one's presentation is discussed for the facilities master plan. Mr. Black. Mr. Moore.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all for being here. I will not wax poetically about the next topic because I know we've got a heavy agenda of possibly information. If you want to kind of set the stage. Thank you, ma'am. Few minutes since we were here last visiting on capacity utilization with the facilities master plan. Tonight's really about gathering information and processing and looking at consistency and continuity of research. To be clear, there's no decision that's going to be made tonight. Tonight's really about just gathering information and processing and looking at the three, of processing and gathering the information. We have a solid 10 to 11 months before we will bring to you at the board any level of formal recommendations. You will hear, that said, tonight, we'll talk through several things. You're going to hear terms like consolidation, capacity, utilization, underutilization, overutilization, student enrollment. You're going to see charts and percentages and graphs that have red and yellow and green associated campuses and names. And that's all wonderful because those are the things that we need to see. So we start understanding where we are, understand what it is that we're facing, know what we've learned and know where we're wonderful focused here. And you'll see in the presentation in just a minute, slide two or three into timeline that will kind of help break some of those things down as well. That's the first part. The second part of what we'll talk through focuses a lot on pre-K. The pre-K lens, just in general, what we as a district do to provide high-quality innovative pre-K. And so, we're going to talk through how that specifically is impacting bond planning. A lot has changed with regard to our pre-K numbers and our emergent numbers, which we planned in the bond two years ago. Kind of understand the timeline we're on, how that impacted bond oversight committee, and how it correlates with what we'll bring in as a board after we have a long-term community discussion. And really, in all honesty, it's a perfect timing with Larry and Carla here as well because these two areas are overlapping. Working within deficit budgets, underutilization spaces, there's a linkage. And so we'll kind of start putting some of those pieces together tonight as well. With us, Susan Miller, she was here last time, kind of walked us through this from Wolfher in February. We also have David Sturtz. And so, they're going to talk us through this and run through that presentation and how to turn over to you on this.
It's lovely to see you all. And, oh my goodness, this is spicy. I can breathe and smell everything. So, so thank you all. Some of these charts that you're going to see are some of the conversations. But we talked on the, some of these videos, we just seem to see them. So, what we're going to talk about is just the purpose this evening that we're going to be talking about, as mentioned by Mr. Moore, through the pre-K, as well as emergent by bilingual students and how that's impacted in our thought process about where we're going to be here, which is through our master plan. Last time, as you recall, I showed you quite a bit of information about the capacity within our tools and I said, we'll pause and go back to that capacity report, which we've done and staff is finally having opportunity to kind of go through this with a flying to school. So I'm sure they'll provide you the final copy once they've kind of blessed it. Then we're also about pre-K and ECE, early childhood education, and how we're currently serving students and different options of how we might be thinking about how to follow the degree of education for pre-K into the future. And also, the discussion of emergent bilingual, that's certainly something that all of us across the country are facing in terms of how we're educating children that are coming to us and how can we honor that experience for them. And then, we hope at the end, we will have an opportunity of Q and A, conversations on how we can all talk about what's come for us in the early childhood. So, let's just talk about framing the considerations. We're looking at, this all started basically from the discussion of the capital improvement program. And you all authorized a certain amount of bonds about six months ago. And at that time, your bond oversight committee, with the guidance from that bond authorization, there's the different buckets of where those dollars are supposed to go in accordance with the authorization. The idea and objective really is how do you deploy capital dollars for the budget, for the benefit of your operational budgets, so that you're effectively putting dollars into buildings and to classrooms that are honoring students? We also look at educational adequacy. Are we providing the same experiences, learning opportunities for kids across the district? Equitable access to highly resourced schools with the deployment of capital? Can we improve the operations within the buildings? And with that improvement, can we also deploy those dollars of benefits of operation improvement back into the classrooms? And then overall building conditions? The whole purpose of a capital program, right, is to be putting it back into the facilities and security and purposes for better experiences for children. And all of that ends up focusing on the effective, efficient use of taxpayer dollars and their investments to optimize educational experiences and outcomes for students. Basically, it's the friendship of relationship between the taxpayers and the school district. Are we spending the dollars in the right places that are getting us the outcomes that they expect us to provide for our students? So when they walk out of Carrollton Farmers Branch, they have the great education that they can seize the day and go on to be great citizens of Texas. So, with that.
If I may on that, just real quick on that, just to tag team. So, my role in support, this is support our master plans across the country and doing this for a number of years. What I've seen, just sort of as an introduction, way of introduction, started out in educator in South America, following my now-wife, Chaser, at work, came back, ran a tutoring company for years and have been doing this since. And where you are at in your budget and academic cycle and so forth, you're in a fairly enviable position for districts who are starting into having a deficit budget. The reason I say that is working with multiple clients right now who are in more of a crisis position, where this has been going, this deficit budget has been happening for a number of years and we are having to do very drastic changes in a very short amount of time in more of a reactionary mode than anybody would like. And so, you have, you're not in that space. The deficit budget relative, as Chris was setting the table for us, the deficit budget has a relationship to how you are spread fairly thin across your facilities and operations. That makes sense from a dollars and cents standpoint. And so, what we aim to do in the facilities master plan that's different than a traditional sort of capital investment plan is we're not just looking at what's broke, what needs fixed. We're looking at how are, where you have schools and what conditions you have schools and what sizes are those schools and what locations are those schools relative to your students? How are those things impacting your ability to invest in every student every day? Because this facility acts as your dominant divider for your budget. It's how that budget is divided amongst all of your students, with all of your staff, the schools, the number of schools, how you operate them, the conditions that they're in, how they're utilized or not. Essentially, that impacts that dollar per capita, that dollar per student, which allows for the interventions, the extras, regulations, the resources and all the things that we want. And where deficit budgets start to come in, where in my experience is, you still are working hard to provide those robust resources and experiences and supports to students. But as those operational expenses increase or remain still and our operations are spread out amongst ever-fitting utilizations and enrollments, does the expense per capita goes up and that reaches a tipping point where we just can't, we can't do that and be in the black every year. And so, the way that we conceive of the work in master plan with school districts is to have, and we're going to end on this note, a positivist approach or a trade-up approach to how we do planning. We are going to work with you and your citizens, you know, for, as was mentioned, over months here. This is not an immediate thing. Your district's going to need to work on, what's the trade-up scenario for kids that allows us to invest what we want in our kids every day and do it in a way that we can be in the black, so that we can keep doing it year over year over year, not get into a crisis. So that's where we're coming from. When you see those reds and those greens and those consolidations and all of these are, these are data points that we're working with to work at how do we rearrange your portfolio of schools to allow you to invest with how you want for the long term? That's our end game. Always best for students in the long term that allows you to do what you want to do.
As a compliment to that, I think also you're in an enviable position, unlike, I don't know if you remember the map that I showed you last time, but around you, you have districts that are struggling with enrollment. You guys are stable. You're not having those fluctuations that are taking place. So, it's a benefit that you all are ahead of this, as David was saying, rather than being in a deficit mindset. You have kiddos coming to your school and you're stable. You know, you're not losing children. So, this is more of a rightsizing and/or a getting all of the pieces in place so that you can continue to serve children in a healthy, financially wonderful facility spaces. And that's the opportunity that your taxpayers afforded you with the approval of bond. So, that's how we, you know, that's how we're trying to break it, is how do we come from a benefits perspective as opposed to a deficit perspective? So, we're going to go into the capacity side.
Okay.
Okay, so you're up, I believe.
Okay, so capacity.
Can we do timeline real quickly? As Chris mentioned, there's not going to be any decisions being made this evening or any of your future about facilities and the consolidations and/or development. But what we wanted to provide to you is just like, where are we going between now and next year? So, right now, this is where we are, the workshop, which we're talking about today with the pre-K and our ECE as well as our bilingual kiddos. And then, the oversight committee is on the 16th. And so, they'll basically be seeing a very similar presentation to what we're presenting to you all this evening. They might have a few more graphs or a couple more extra pages, but this is pretty much what they're going to be seeing as well. You'll have on the 2nd of May, a conversation about pre-K, where do you guys want to go in terms of how to serve kiddos in the pre-K, ECE spaces? Then you'll have the meeting in June where you will look at the final recommendations that we have as a big picture for the facility master plan. There will not be any exact detail about, hey, are we going to be consolidating these two schools over here? Or maybe we're going to be refocusing this building over here? The concept is going to be big picture to afford us the ability to then have the community weigh in on how they want to move forward with some of the decisions or option ideas that we're providing to them, so that you have a community dialogue. There'll also be a survey that allows you to have a voice from the community that you can evaluate in the, at the June meeting as well. So hopefully, there'll kind of be an information or communication loop that will be beneficial for you guys. And then, the proposal is that in June through December, the idea is to put together a community committee that will help inform you all about the different pathways that might be afforded to you all and when you start thinking about how you want to be providing great learning spaces for children and what that impact might look like and then how you will get to making a decision come, I believe it's the February timeframe, about are we thinking of consolidation? What does that look like? We have the community input for that and you'll be able to make a well-informed decision at that time. Any questions about the timer? Awesome. Okay, so I'm going to let you do the capacity.
Okay. So, for the capacity.
I'll let you take that.
I'll take a talking stick.
Yeah, you get that one.
All right. So, we talked about capacity before with you. Before we get into the numbers, I have this, there's three different kinds of, three different kinds of capacity. There is program capacity, which is how many kids are in an elementary, traditional classroom or a special education classroom, 22 or 10 usually. And that doesn't, it's irrespective of how large the classroom is. A classroom gets 22 or classrooms that get 10. Then there's square footage-based capacity, which is saying a 700-square-foot classroom gets a different capacity than a 900-square-foot classroom. Because you can, if you want to have, say, 36, 37, 38 square foot per student, which is standard, then why would you want that? You would want that so you can do more than sit and give, kind of teaching and learning. You would multimodal instruction, rearrange the classroom, that kind of thing. And then, the third kind is emotional capacity, which is I walk down the hallway and there's a bunch of kids and go, ah, it's full! But, that doesn't relate to, that does not dialogue with the fact that it might be full because three classrooms are being used as lounges or pull-out spaces or yoga rooms or what you call it, what you want. Like just, the rooms are being spread out in the building. You don't have the kids, you spread out in the building. Now, the rooms that you do use and the space that you do use feels fuller. Right? For the purposes of the capacity here, we started with a program capacity analysis. We've landed for the planning purposes on a square footage-based capacity, which is more conservative. This lowers your capacity by using a square footage base because it says that a 700-square-foot classroom doesn't get the same number of kids as a 900-square-foot classroom when you do planning in this metric. So, the numbers that you see are based upon a square footage-based capacity. It is more conservative than a program-based capacity, meaning program capacity would show that you actually have more surplus seats than this would. It also, I joke about the emotional capacity, but it is real and you will see in the report that the detailed report that our team is delivering, room by room, period by period, the use of every space in your, in your, every school, every period. And you'll see that there is wide variety in how these rooms are used across the district. And so, when you see a building that says it's 80-some percent utilized and you say, well, I can, you know, I hear that school's really full. Let's look into the rooms and see how all the rooms are used. 80% can be comfortably full. If it's aggressively full, let's look at how all the rooms are being used. Overall, across all of your districts, as Susan said, you are not declining, you are flat. That does not mean that you're not declining in some areas. Growing in some areas, you're declining in others, your net is flat. On average, utilization is about 70%. You're not going to change very much for that, 70, 72%. And that's a little low. But what you see is that you have swings, where there's some are much lower. Average age, 35 years, average build in 89, swift something or other, right? I have daughters that are. Capacity is 33,000, surplus capacity, this is using the square footage capacity. You're about 96 to 98 hundred surplus seats, using the more conservative metric. Got surplus capacity. Here's how it looks. So here's the Christmas tree, the reds and the greens and the yellows. Where you see red, you have under, some pretty significant underutilization. Green is in that comfortably utilized or well-utilized, optimally utilized. And optimally utilized is somewhere between 80 and 95% on average. It feels different in different buildings for some of the reasons that I described before. But you do have pockets of pretty significant underutilization, even using this more conservative metric. And you can see this is the step current, this is the projected. You can look at school by school here, I'm not going to obviously read this entire chart, but this gives you a summary state of capacity across the district. Breaking it down by elementary, you're actually growing a tick, that's essentially flat, over the next nine years. And here's, here where you start to see the difference. The closer you get down by grid, into the grade configurations and geographies, the more you see the variance. Six schools greater or equal than 80%, so that's like, but under 100. You don't have any schools that are over 100. That's an important thing to note. Schools that are above 70, like in that 70 range, you've got eight schools below 70 and some of those are 60, upper 50s, they're low. That's where most of your surplus is, 5200 of the 98 or 96. Here's your secondaries. You've got quite a spread. Middle schools, 65% utilized across the board. That's really low. That's also not uncommon. Middle schools are a point of Exodus in many of the clients that we work with. Kids send you kid to try out the elementary school, they try something else in middle school. High schools are a little bit better utilized, in the mid-70s overall, but uneven, for interviewers, they're on the lower end. Middle schools, you got six middle schools, flat enrollment, one below 50, four, and then 66 up, one above 75. You're low. You're just low in utilized. 2,500, 2,200 to 2,500 surplus seats. And the middle school range, high schools, they have more capacity, so proportionately less underutilization, but still a good number of seats here. You're actually, where you are losing is a little bit of the high school, but your net balances out and you've got one really low and then two, two in the sweet spot. So that's your survey on capacity utilization. Questions on that in particular before we move on? Happy to address that now or later. Ma'am.
Could you confirm again what on the tables, the building square footage represents? Is that only classroom or is that the?
That's the total, that's the total GSF, total gross square footage of the facility. So that is just a standard, that is not used in the capacity calculations. That is simply a reference for how big a school is. What is used for the capacity calculations is we use the TDA standards for construction on the square foot per student when you're building a new school today. What's the standard square foot per student in the classroom? So we use those standards, apply those to every space and that dictated the capacity. Furthermore, if you want to get, to get really into the weeds, we capped that so that the the square foot capacity could not be more than the program capacity. So if a room was that, a little bit on the large side, it wouldn't get more capacity than your program capacity would suggest. So it's capped that way, so it's not showing that you'd have, you know, 35 kids in a classroom. That never happens.
So, but on the portfolio sheet, there's a note that says exclude alternative learning spaces. So are all alternative learning spaces that we put into, which I assume means our general areas, like a field and?
No, that's more, that's your grimes and your alternative.
Okay, so alternative facilities, not spaces.
Correct, correct. Okay. So that's more, that's your grimes and your alternative. Okay, so alternative facilities, not spaces, correct.
Just one question? Okay.
Okay, so now, and they're going to be on the left. Okay, so now we're going to talk about pre-K and ECE and then some different ideas about how to serve children in that age group. So, you've seen this chart before when we were here last. And one thing that kind of stood out to all of us was when we started talking with the team that oversees pre-K and ECE, like, well, you know, in your projections, we were expecting, for example, only about 1,100 kiddos to be served this year. And that was kind of the cutoff back in October. We're now at 1,400 children. So you are adding children and we'll see additional numbers that will show you that we've added even more children since last, since the October count and then since January and then again, just the past number of months to April. So we'll show you those different numbers. But you guys have already hit your 1,400 mark that was really supposed to be projected for next year and the following year. So, and that's a good thing because you're serving kids and they're going to be coming to your schools. But it also puts stresses on staffing and where we're going to be putting children, what really is the best program for kiddos that are this little? High quality is what we want for them. And so, we're looking at what could be, different options and ideas for how best to serve, usually utilized. Okay, so you guys right now have 19 campuses with pre-K for four-year-olds. And so, all of those purples are showing you where those locations are. The red dots are showing you that they do not have the facility or space, I should say, to serve the pre-K kiddos. And so, they actually send their children who are interested in pre-K to other schools. So, if we look at Davis, which is up north, the red dot up at the highest, they send their kiddos over to Kent, which is to the west. I can't reach it, I'm sorry. But I think you can see that. Then Sheffield, the other red dot in the northeastern corner, sends their little ones over to Fergo. For McCoy, McCoy kiddos go to Rainwater for monolingual, monolingual, and to Blanton for bilingual. And I think in the questions that you guys asked us back in February, one of the questions was what is the difference between bilingual and monolingual and lingual? And we tried to address that, but basically bilingual is, it's going both ways, right? And monolingual is just one-way language. Does that make sense? Then for Country Place, they go over to Good, so over to that way. And then, La- La Valita, way down here, goes up to River Chase. So parents are driving. They're, they're, they're getting their kids there somehow. They get them to pre-K, they get them to little soccer players and they get them to little baseball players, so they'll drive them to where they need to go to take care of their little ones, as evidenced by just where we're moving around. Okay, so, what, how do we actually define who we're serving for pre-K? Well, under the Texas law, they require that you are to serve those children with limited English as well as economically disadvantaged. I think we talked about this before, but the highest need or highest impact is for those little ones with socio, social, socially or economically disadvantaged. We know that children of poverty, when you can get them into pre-K with solid pre-K, rigorous pre-K programs, they truly benefit and they carry that experience and that learning through first, second, third, or kindergarten, first, second, third. So really, the rigor of the program and the quality of the program is critical, specifically for our little ones that are most at risk. So you serve in your whole pre-K system, 93% of your kids that you serve fit in that, in that socioeconomic standing. 7% of the children that you serve are those that pay for tuition. So they're paying, their parents are paying for them to go to your pre-K programs. So, we know that probably, there's a balance in there somewhere where there are probably individuals who would benefit from having pre-K accessible to them. And we can talk about that. Okay, now this is the area of growth that we'll touch on. So, the purple dots, these, these dots, basically say that you're, they have, they're serving 90% of the kiddos that are in the area, that are in their boundary area. that are in their boundary area. Only seventy to eighty percent of the kiddos that are in, for example, this area, are being served right now. And they're going up to River Chase, but there's more children in this area that could be served. And same thing with all these little green dots over here. And then your fifty percent to sixty-nine percent are the orange dots. We're only serving between fifty to sixty-nine percent of those kiddos. There's opportunities to serve more children in that area. And then the red dots, less than forty-nine percent of the children that are eligible are going to pre-K. So there's opportunities to serve more children in our schools at high quality. And that's something that we wanted to focus on, and we talked a lot about that today with Kim, who heads up academics. And she, a group of us, like, and just talked about like what could be and where we really need to be focusing on, how best to serve these children. Okay, so, just to break out, understanding each individual articulation area and how many kiddos we serve in either pre-K or E C E. E C E are the little ones, less than four years old, and have needs, additional needs. So, for example, Creekview and Smith are sixty-two, seventy-five percent. Ranchview, we've only serving about thirty-five percent economically disadvantaged, but then we can also look at that southwest area and we can look at the economics of that area. This, that, that, the population that we serve is going to be different, as you all well know, of the central and northern part of the district. Um, we serve about two-hundred and fifty, sixty, uh, Creekview, Smith and Turner for our pre-Ks. And then you can see in our Creekview, Smith and Turner, we're in the fifties, um, high forties for our E C E kiddos that we serve. Number of pre-K sections, you can also see where we're serving or have the most spaces. Um, and then also the floor, the number of E C E sections. What I found interesting when you look at it is Ranchview has six and nineteen for a population that, um, you know, it basically has a lower, or a higher socioeconomic standing than the rest of the district as a whole. But it certainly has the spaces that they're trying to address the needs of the community. Okay, so we have different options that we want to talk with you guys about this evening and that we've gone through with, um, as I mentioned with Kim, as well as with Sandra and Susan, who head up pre-K and younger learning spaces for kids in elementary. Option one, let's just keep it status quo. We'll just keep going the way we're going. And we won't necessarily be able to add any additional spaces. We won't really be able to serve additional kiddos. We'll just kind of stay with the seventy-two pre-K sections and the twenty-one E C Es. And how does that impact our utilization? Because once again, we get back to how are we using our buildings? And how are we benefiting, benefiting kids? So, we keep the utilization of about seventy, seventy-one percent overall for our elementary schools. If we just kept the E C E and pre-Ks where they are. Option two is we think about, well, how do we serve more kiddos equitably across the district? So we could have one up in the north, one in the central, and one in the southwest. And that way, we'd be able to have, each area would have a distinctive program or a distinctive location where kiddos would all go. Uh, the programming would be pretty consistent and similar from one to the other. Um, what does that do for us? Well, that means that we have curriculum that is standard. We're able to have teachers that have supports with each other. One of the biggest factors is high-quality teaching in our pre-K spaces. Um, and if we lose our turnover in pre-K, which is not uncommon, then that just is a reset for children all over again, and a reset for professional development, and a reset for financial supports going back into those classrooms. So how can we be more effective and efficient with the dollars that we have? And one of the ways is to have the children all together so that we are having a rigorous program that supports those children of greatest need and consistency of delivery. Option three is, well, what happens if, you know, maybe kids don't want to be, you know, getting on buses and driving, or parents don't want to be driving their kids? I'm sorry, my contact just balled up for some reason. In this case, we would size it to two centers, one in the north and one in the west, southwest. Um, and then in the center, we could continue to serve children at their local schools. That allows for kiddos to maybe walk to school with their parents, access, et cetera. And that makes it, um, when you look at the number of kiddos that are in that Smith area and, and the Turner area, that provides for them to have ease of access compared to if they were all in the center school. To the north, there's a need for a center program, just because when you look at the population that's not being served up there, um, we have space that could be, if we can build something that can serve them, that would mean that we get additional kiddos that are not being served at this time. And also, we could potentially provide for tuition kiddos as well that might have need. We understand that a lot of kiddos may be just moving up or traveling across the line up to Papel to go to those E C E and pre-K programs up there. And this way, we could kind of keep them with us. And we could serve them in the north. And then the same thing would be in the southwest. How would we be able to ensure not only are those children that are economically disadvantaged being served in rigorous and well-funded programs, but also those children who may, or parents who may want tuition-based programming? We'd be able to afford that as well. Um, in this case, we serve about twenty-three hundred kiddos. Um, with two centers at about eight hundred, um, in terms of size for kids. Um, this case, the elementary utilization would adjust from about seventy-one percent down to about sixty-seven percent overall utilized in the elementary schools.
Susan, if I may real quick.
Yeah.
This is where this decision materially impacts your facility's master plan considerations for your elementary schools. Because if you stay status quo, um, you know, okay, we know, we know what we're working with in terms of where kids are in capacities. If you go to the second option, you drop almost ten percentage points in utilization across the board, that is never even. That enrollment drop will not be even, that, that sort of spread is not even, cause you don't have it at all the schools, alright? And so, that will, will take some schools from moderately utilized to under and from under to really under. Okay, that's a reality. The question is, what's best for your pre-K program? Do you want to expand seats or not? If you don't want to expand seats, option one. If you want to expand seats, you're logically, you're, you're at two or three, which have consequences for how you use the rest of your buildings. Again, because that, that how we operate our buildings is impacting how we can distribute our dollars and that's contributing to that deficit, which we can right. You're at a point where you can absolutely right that. Um, so, looking at what this decision is, is going to impact what the options are for your elementary schools.
And keep in mind, with those nineteen campuses, we're only able to serve about fourteen to fifteen hundred students. With a couple centers or three centers, your amount of students that you can serve goes from what is expected of a, of the fifteen hundred right now, or fourteen hundred right now, up to the twenty-three hundred or twenty-four hundred, depending on which avenue we, we go down. Which means that, you know, they also will continue ideally to manipulate to kindergarten and to first grade into our schools. Any questions?
Where do we get the assumption that we're at fifty percent utilization? Why do? Those are households that may have opted to not send their children. How does that change? Just because we don't send them or because we have more capacity? These are places that, you know, you see the red dots on there. They're gonna still be red dots.
Potentially, but in the north, they, they know that there are people or kiddos that are going across into Papel, so they're not being served. We don't have, we don't have any spaces, we've maxed out. So, across the, the, the district, um, we are only able at this time to serve fifteen hundred kids.
We calculated your pre-K capacity, your utilization at pre-K is about ninety-eight percent.
Right, so you're up against the wall, or ceiling.
You're capped.
Yeah.
So you're absolutely right, there is some conjecture that would go into, if we build it, will they come?
Right, right, right.
And if you were at eighty-nine or seventy-eight percent capa, utilization at your pre-K, that would be a legitimate conjecture. When you're at a hundred percent capacity, it's fairly safe to assume that you build some more capacity and you'll have more supply. On top of that, there are two trends that have just only accelerated in the past ten, twelve years, uh, in my, in my, in my observation. One is pre-K, enrollment and interest in pre-K. Because if you get your kids kindergarten ready, you close your achievement gaps. If every kindergartner starts at the same place, they learn at the same rate. The problem is they're not coming in at the same place. So like, that is a major, major thing, is the quality of pre-K. Second thing is curriculum. Like, getting kids, you know, ready for viable career opportunities to be in. Those two things are, are ubiquitous in almost any program I work with in districts, particularly post-recession, from the oh-eight recession. The, the, those two things are paramount. So, we have a fairly high degree of confidence on a read of your data that there is additional demand for pre-K that simply cannot be met.
And there's also laws now that states are passing that are requiring that you provide um, pre-K for socio, social, economic, I keep trying to say the same word, economically disadvantaged kiddos, right? And so, that is something that they're saying, these children qualify. And I think that's the other thing to think about, is you are serving ninety-three percent of economically disadvantaged kids in your spaces, and only seven percent are tuition-based. And that doesn't mean that those individuals who could pay tuition don't want to come. There's just no space for them to have that option.
I think we're missing that point.
Right.
We're at ninety-eight percent already.
Right.
Fifteen hundred, so I have that criticism.
Right, so, so just, and we'll show you some numbers that are coming up. The numbers that are showing with the children that are coming to you um, at a very fast pace are only putting more and more pressure on the pre-K spaces.
Okay, so if we're at ninety-eight percent capacity on pre-K, but we have multiple facilities that are at fifty, sixty percent utilization, is there space in those buildings that can be retrofitted for pre-K?
No, from what we understand, we've maxed out those spaces from what Kim has told us in the pre-K, the elementary ed leadership. We've kind of maxed out where? Because, think about this, Fernando is a perfect example. A third of the students at Fernando are pre-K out of three hundred kids. That's a lot of pre-K kids in an elementary school. And so, as they told me on the phone, it's like, those children are running the school. Like, they, they're constantly serving those pre-K kids with, who have high need. Um, because of who you are serving, there's different calls on attention, shall we say? And so, just by adding, even if you put another line of classrooms for pre-K at Fernando, because there's space there, that doesn't necessarily mean you're going to have the right programming and the right rigor and the right interventions that are necessary. And you also have to think about staffing, right? Staffing is a challenge as well, you have two people in a pre-K classroom. You want a high-quality teacher, right, that's critical, and you want support for that.
But still with the center too.
Yes, except that you would be able to have them concentrated and supports and coverage. And right now, if a pre-K teacher is out, from what I've been told, um, then you're drawing people and resources from different places that are serving other kiddos. And so, the idea is really to be able to put resources at centers where they have great quality rigor of their programming, they have different engaging spaces for pre-K. Um, I think some of you guys are going on a tour tomorrow, are you not? Yeah, so I'll be curious to see what you think, compare and contrast. Go to on the tour, and then go over to Fernando, and see what you think.
There's a, in our experience working with clients, there's a, sort of a minimum critical mass that most districts see necessary to cohabitate a pre-K and an elementary school. And that's at least four pre-K classrooms in a building. And what, what we've learned of that, the reason why is, you know, you have somebody that's out sick. Well, uh, you have just four teachers, three teachers there, one of them's out sick, you now got three classrooms, two teachers, you're cohabitating an elementary school. If you don't have a, a, a big density of, of teachers and students, it's harder to get the sub in. Where does that sub usually come from? The elementary school, because you have to, have to have somebody watching those four-year-olds. Anybody who's raised a four-year-old knows, they add that, you know, you gotta. And so, you're pulling the resources from the elementary school, and that makes it hard. And then, and then, of course, with most things, there's a law of diminishing returns. You, when you get so much that you're a third, forty percent of the population, now are you an elementary school or are you a pre-K school?
Yeah.
Without some elementary programming? What happens to your elementary program when the dominant focus of the school is on E C C, which is different than K five? And, and so your, your resource spread becomes a challenge. And this speaks to the broader element, the broader frame that I see districts wrestling with, is this, how do we concentrate our resources? We can spread too thin and we can pack them in too tight. But there is a middle ground where there's a sweet spot. And where most districts are struggling right now with flat to declining enrollment is the spread too thin part. And how do we create pockets of economies of scale within our district operations? So that we have enough redundancies in staff and resources and so forth, so that we can manage the day-to-day vagaries of illness and vacation pregnancies and all these things that can, that happen in life and are staffing. Where do we create enough economies of scales that we can weather that on a consistent basis while consistently providing the right resources and support for kids? So we, that's what we look at. Where do, are, are leaning, you know, this towards working to identify these sort of micro economies of scale within districts to, to allow that continuity, equity, those resources?
When you mentioned some states are requiring, is Texas one of them?
Texas does have the, the requirement that to serve those children, if they want to be served, have to fit in those two, two or three categories that I showed you right there.
They, they, they're called qualified?
Students, yeah.
Right, so it, it has to do with economic status?
If they want to be served.
If they want to be served, right. And then the question is, do they know what's available to them? Right? That's another question, yeah.
I want to go back to the, just to the last question about the utilization of current buildings. Cause I think, at least what I understood, the question was, like, I mean, Fernando, for example, why can't Fernando be turned into a pre-K center, period? Like, take out all the other elementary out of it and make it pre-K only?
Well, and that's, that's something that we can look to as a long-term plan, right? But with that, that means, what does that, what's the investment have to look like in order for us to provide the programming and the spaces that are gonna support those children and their learning? Um, and so that we have equitable opportunities and learning spaces for kids, right? So that we're, it's not going to be, it's not going to be exactly the same, you know, a center to an elementary school that has pre-K. Ideally, you want to resource them as best as you can. But, you know, the centers are going to have more concentrated, a lot more four-year-olds and, and three-year-olds than you might have over at like a Blair or at another school.
And there's, there's nothing to say you can't.
Can't do it that way.
There's nothing to say you don't ready.
Right, I was just going back, that, that felt like, at least when I was starting to take out of that, was that's not even an option.
Oh, no, no, they, no, they are.
I have a hard time knowing we have all these buildings out there, but yet we're gonna talk about building three new buildings.
Oh, we're not talking about necessarily building three new buildings. You can always repurpose, right? And that's one of the conversations that we have to have is, with this opportunity that's before you, how do you leverage your bond dollars effectively to potentially repurpose a building to serve kiddos at a pre-K, E C E level? So you're exactly right on track.
One other thing I'll throw out, when we went back through and looked at the floor plans as they were originally designed, the first time a pre-K space shows up on the floor plans in two thousand and five. Our average age of building, as you saw up there earlier, is nineteen eighty-nine. So, and most of our older buildings are in that northern area where our biggest pre-K need is. So those floor plans typically are the least well-suited for a pre-K environment. And that's not to say you spend enough money, you can do almost anything. But whether or not it's the best use of the money, that's another question. And that, we're just trying to make the best decisions here, so.
Right. And in the, the bond committee, is there pre-K centers in that list of, I don't recall.
No, ma'am, the way the bond planning was prioritized and planned for, we've got blocks of six classrooms that are supposed to be renovated for pre-K of six classrooms that are supposed to be renovated for pre-K and they're all in that northern area, north of one ninety, if you will. But like I mentioned, those are all the oldest floor plans that we have, the oldest buildings that we have. They're typically on, most of them are the smaller buildings. So you're, you're, as they mentioned earlier, you're changing the balance of instruction in that building. And when you kind of change the balance of instruction, you change kind of the dynamic of the building. We're just trying to respect the best way to deliver the best pre-K that we can. And we're trying to be wise about that.
So you mentioned the northern part, what about the southern part, the Farmers Ranch, South Carrollton part?
Yes, now I, I'm sort of assuming that, you know, where we've already identified replace the school, that's a new building and that's, so that's why those weren't identified as for the pre-K renovations, that's because it's a whole new school.
But it kind of sounds like we're trying to resolve our issues before we decide to build something new.
We're trying, we're trying to make sure we're, we're following the strategy that will be the best long-term use of our dollars and have the best outcomes for our students.
The new building plans currently, as it stands today, have plans for pre-K centers to be built into those new buildings, or pre-K classrooms, ACC classrooms.
Typically, in our portfolio, yes. I will say the exception to that was, I'm, I'm, yeah, we did not plan for pre-K at Sheffield, which is our newest elementary.
And that's why those kiddos are going to.
And that's why those kids are going to Forno. Plus they're just at capacity, they're right at the edge. So, but anyway, I mean, that, just, does that help? Hopefully.
It hurts.
Well, and that's, but that's, but that's why, that's really why we're having this conversation now and why we had it in February, is that you guys have the opportunity truly to take a breath and rethink about what can be. You know, now we're looking at, hey, we're stable, that's where we are right now, this is our portfolio that we have. How are we best going to manage our portfolio? Do we need all the buildings? Do we need most of them and repurpose a couple of them for different purposes? So it is a, it's a big undertaking, no doubt, but at least you have the breathing room to make the right decisions or make well-informed decisions, robust options for yourself. They may not be perfect five years from now or ten years, hindsight is always going to be twenty-twenty, but you all now have the chance to just breathe. Bond Oversight Committee gets a chance to kind of breathe along with you and look at the data the same way, look at the information. We're trying to make this as, not only a data-driven process, but what's best for kids and how are we supporting them in their spaces? And you have the ability to kind of do that work with the, with the gift of the bonds.
She's in effect, I'm, I'm talking to her.
Yeah, um, to, and I want to say, I completely agree with what Cory said to Carolyn that pre-K, from the committee with the bond, the priority was, you know, pre-K investment and special ed investment as well, those were the two highest priorities, so. But it wasn't discussed anything further than that, from that aspect. When we say centers, on all future, you know, as we get more into the decision points and we say center, you know, when I hear that, I think, you know, a brand-new building, that's it, you know, we could, I think that needs to be kind of clarified at the beginning with oversight, you know, what that is. But I think also the information that needs to be made available to the Oversight Committee and then us as a board is information on the pre-K center we already built. You know, when was it built? How was it funded? When did it stop being used as a pre-K center? Why we stopped using it as a pre-K center? And depending on that, how are we not going to get into that position again if these are one of those decisions? Because these are, it's, it's not good.
I mean, I was going to say the same thing, is like, we're literally telling the voters, oh, y'all gave us money, wants to do this.
And we did it.
Just kidding.
Do you know which school it is?
It's Kelly, it was a Kelly pre-K center, which is now the Child Development Academy.
Okay.
Which is what serves our teachers' kids.
Which is absolutely.
Wonderful.
Absolutely a priority, I have not, you know.
But it was built as a pre-K center, it's never built as a school.
Okay.
And so we have done this before and that, I agree with you, like, and I'm not on the, having to do the bond oversight, I'm just thinking community.
Historical data.
Storing out there.
We need a pre-K center and voters are going to say, we are.
We already tried that, yeah.
And y'all obviously didn't like it and now it's something else.
And if I, if I may on that, here's the difference.
I'm sorry.
You're.
We're going to know the difference. I mean, I get from a consultant's standpoint, the difference, but we've got to know within our district why we built it, what led to build it, and then it's what the trends are and what's happening and the changes in education.
Yes, ma'am, and I apologize if I see a flippant on that and if it ended not, because what I'm, what I'm saying is different now is the surge in enrollment and demand, which for a time can be handled, was handled in a distributed model. Let's just make it accessible, you know, around most every corner, not everyone, nineteen of the twenty-four. Oh. And now you're at the point where, congratulations, you succeeded, you're now full. How do we move, how do we move on? So in, in a way, we'll do that digging with you a little bit. And I think part of what we can communicate, help communicate out is, you know, you're now full, you succeeded. Now, now how do you grow to that next step? And it's probably not just trying to expand from a, from all the challenges that we just mentioned, but going back to that strategy that you considered before is probably, at least in part, is something to consider.
It has been many years, but, no, I do not remember the dates.
I joined the board ten years ago.
Okay.
It was, it acted as a pre-K center when I got on the board, but it was in the process of phasing out. I did not know the specific discussion that were held to make that decision. But within about two years of my joining the board, it was transition to board the current type.
So was that two thousand fourteen then? Ten years ago?
And absolutely, things have changed, education, our demographic, our education needs, our demographics have changed, but we have to understand why, how, why, in order to not repeat it.
Because the age is also.
This is also good evidence that we repurposed a building for something good that serves our kids and our employees now. So whether pre-K was, you know, pre-K got distributed, just, what do you call it, your distribution model? But that building is a prime example that we didn't just shut the door and say that didn't work, we, we repurposed. And I think that's the whole point is we're trying to figure out where do we repurpose this building for pre-K because it's underutilized? And does it make sense to also build another academy over here to serve students that not only can pay, but also to serve them because they're going somewhere else? So I think that we have that opportunity, but also.
That's absolutely part of the story. I, I agree. And we, we have to look at what is best for kids, no matter what is happening out, but we also have to be cognizant of the other face.
Absolutely.
So we have to know the story to better understand the story and where our end is and what we want the end to be.
Yeah, and that, and that might be, I don't know how far back your board docs goes, I don't know how far back you're able to pull up information, but when you look at what was happening in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, and this is just guessing, so you guys have to help me out here, but if you look back at two thousand fourteen, fifteen, pre-K was about eight hundred and fifty-some children and it dropped over two or three years and your kinders started dropping as well. And so I'm wondering if there was a discussion about, well, we need to kind of fill up our kindergartens and maybe we don't need the space for the pre-K because we're declining? I don't know, but it is something, when you look at what was happening those ten years ago, there's a little bit of noise taking place at the pre-K kinder level in first grade.
One of the issues, one of the issues that was being considered was staff recruitment and retention. And that was a, one of the considerations for using it was providing childcare.
Got it, okay.
Primarily for districts.
Okay, so then that was another part of the puzzle piece, was how do we retain?
But also, what was the timeline of when now pre-K is required? So the dynamics have changed. Like when you did it, it was, that's what was best for CFP at the time, that we had enough kids to serve for pre-K. The story changed again because now we're getting an influx of students that aren't the same pre-K students. They, they are high poverty, they have needs, they don't speak the, the same language. So it, the story changed again.
Right.
And that's the accommodation, we have to accommodate the children now of what we're getting.
Right.
And we did make good use of, of that space and it has worked. I mean, I think it's full and I think that, you know, it, it provides a great opportunity for our staff.
Right, right.
So.
So by repurposing, you're serving the, in order to retain your kids?
It's not that the pre-K center model didn't work, the dynamic changed and the students, you weren't getting as many, right? And, and it wasn't required like it is now, so if they utilize it, that's the other part of the story.
There is evidence of that.
Yeah.
Like not an anecdotal story, but.
Right.
Evidence of.
Yeah.
How the decision was made, like what hap, what actually happened.
Right, I, I'm putting, I'm looking back at it.
I mean, I heard speculation.
I think that's it. We, we, we're not going to debate it.
No, yeah.
It needs to be part of the discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
Can I also add, I think Garland High School also built for no pre-K center?
About ten years ago.
Okay. Would it be possible if we could see something?
Absolutely, yeah.
Especially given the same population?
Yes, yes, we can visit that as well. Because the, I think the ones you all are going to go visit were just built, but the model that worked, and I think that was when it was becoming required or it was also an option.
But I think that the comparing and contrasting in the board too, like we need to look within ourselves and like what are we, what are we doing? Like if we're seeing that there's a hundred kids at Forno, like let's go see it, let's go experience our own world, not just go outside of ourselves.
Yeah.
Oh, apparently, but I think for.
No, I agree.
Yeah, it's like for purposes of similarity, Garland High School has a very similar population that we do, emergent bilingual, can block and stop speaking students, and it would be very similar to what we would be trying to build or recreate as a pre-K center. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
And is that the only campus building with pre-K?
No, I mean, you have nineteen campuses with pre-K kiddos.
That are a third of the population?
No, that was the largest one. But that, but like I said before, they've maxed. Like if they only have, can have four classrooms, I think we can go back and look at the sections by articulation area again, it's in your packet, you can see how many classrooms or sections are in each of those schools and that's, or in each of those articulation areas. And I think it's also in your packet too.
Well, and pre-K, you know, you also, you have a restroom in there, there's certain different things that have to happen in that classroom, lower counter, all the supports, resources, so.
Baby toilets.
Yeah, yeah. So that's why there's only four, if you look at classrooms, it's not that there's not classrooms there, it's those are the classrooms that are set up to serve the population of our pre-K kiddos, so.
Can I ask to clarify my question, just on the slide before, before we go on? The middle column, so it's three centers, when you do the math for the utilization below, is that assuming that those three centers are in addition to, so those are three new buildings? And so that decline is going to be because pulling kids and they're going to three new buildings? Or is that, that could be three within the district that we should repurpose?
We, in that, in this model, we have two that are within the district and then an additional one.
Okay, so two current buildings.
That we could repurpose, right? And re, right.
The, the, I think I, if I understand you, you.
Okay, go ahead.
This, this assumes that there are three new capacity centers in the middle option there.
New, brand-new buildings.
Taking these kiddos out, so that's why your.
Other current.
That's why your utilization drops nearly ten points. If you were to repurpose, that utilization will come back up because you're taking capacity offline.
Okay, okay, that was my question.
Yes, ma'am.
So that, but really that.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so that column really can be two different columns, because it could be three with new and three with current.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Because it would change the utilization.
Right. But you, but the average of the elementary school is still going to be adjusted because you're not going to have those pre-K kiddos in all of those nineteen campuses.
Right.
So if I take them away from eighteen of those campuses or seventeen of those campuses.
Yeah, but if we're closing three of our current campuses, no, that's going to help.
You start to balance.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, so for the purposes of grounding us on the definition of newcomers and immigrants, newcomers have been here in the United States less than one year walking into a US school. So they have never been in school before and so it's a new experience for them. The definition of immigrants is that they've been here in the United States and in US schools for less than three years. So we have two groups of kiddos that we're serving in the definition of emergent bilingual. And so I don't mean to, you know, use them interchangeably, so please ask me if, any questions about how I'm, how I'm using the terms. Okay, so this was the chart I kind of referenced at the very beginning of our conversation about newcomers and immigrants. As you can see, back in twenty-one, twenty-two, we had just about fifteen hundred immigrants that we were serving with about another five hundred defined as newcomers. Over that time period, we've almost, well, we've more than doubled in total population that we're serving and just in the past, I think within the past couple of months, we've had another three hundred and some kiddos added into our emergent bilingual section of students or subset of students. In the last month? Last two months, just another three hundred and some, I can give the exact number. But it, it is a increasing number of kiddos that you're serving that fit into these categories. And what was a very eye-opening number for me was that three years ago, you, this population accounted for about thirty-two percent or a third of your students that you serve, they're now forty-four percent and growing, which does what? It impacts operations and costs, additional supports, additional professionals, additional instruction, additional pull-out. So it's, it's going to impact your budget. And so we have to be thinking about that as well. I know you guys are going into that next section, I think later this evening, but just to keep in mind how, once you guys, I think it's, you're set in your budget with your count in October, is that right, I believe, October?
Snapchat.
Is your snapshot date, that's how you get funded? And then children that come along, you're not getting funding for until next year for the count. So that's a, that could be impactful on your budget, as you guys will know, I don't have to tell you that. Okay, so, once again, we have options to be thinking about. The first one is status quo. We continue to serve one-way, monolingual, as I said, or bilingual, and those programs are identified at the different campuses. Option number two would be that the children, when they move in, they, as newcomers, that they would come to go to the nearest campus that would have space available and we use that space, take them through their, I think it's a three to six-week process, three-week, and then they would go back, if there's space available, to their homeschool. And I use the title H homeschool as just the, the school that they would be identified within their boundary, not homeschool. Okay, and then, so as long as there's space. If there isn't space, then they would have to be redirected to another school that does have available space for them. The final, third option is site-based, where you would have dedicated spaces within certain campuses where you would serve those children. And then they'd go through their, their introduction to US school and how you do school and all of that. And then they would be staying in that newcomer program and then they could go back out to a school once space is available, once they've gone through that process. Well, I don't want to call it training, that's not right, but the, you know, just introduction into US schools and how you do school here in the US. So those are the three options. So one would be kind of a center and another one would be just for a small period of time and then transition out and then, right now, just do status quo.
Just, I mean, just to clarify, so it's three, what you're saying is the, they would stay the whole time then?
Right, for that, yes. And then they would go back, let's say for example, we'll use Forno again as an example, they would, they would go to Forno. They would, they would go to Ferno, um, they'd stay at Ferno. They'd transition out of that newcomer center and go into classes at Ferno for that given year.
For that school year.
Right, and then they could go back out.
And then the next school year, they would go back to their home campus.
If they chose to do that.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And then you said the newcomer program is three weeks?
Three weeks, and then they, I think they also can bring them back in if they need to, but it's, it's, um, that's the ideal.
That's the goal.
That's the goal.
We have a lot, we have schools where we're facing the most, facing what Ken felt is today.
Right.
Where we have the most pressure with this, we don't have space, um, oftentimes for the kid, for the child to go back to where they would normally attend. So they may finish out the year, for instance, at Ferno, if that's where the three-week orientation happens.
Because there's space to keep up.
Yes.
And is it elementary, middle, and right?
Yeah, we, we're mainly thinking about elementary and.
It's mostly elementary.
Right.
Well, I was going to say, we've been piloting that at Ferno, um, and Marcus helped us with that with routes. And it has gone really well, so, because Sheffield is extremely overcrowded. So we, um, have set up a, um, a newcomer, uh, program orientation where we are servicing those children. And then if there's space, they go back. And so far, it's been working. And we're just trying to, you know, what can we do to help these children? Because, you know, when you look at the classrooms, especially at Sheffield, they're overcrowded. And so we can't shove twenty-eight, twenty-nine kids in kindergarten, first grade. And then as they keep moving at different times, um, of the year. So we started that, um, what, about a month ago, Mark, would you say? Yeah, and so we have the routes and the parents, um, they took them the first day and then we're servicing. And then they have the opportunity to go back. So just trying to see what, what is working. Because it's, you know, our job is to serve kids.
Right.
And we don't want them to sit in a class and then the teacher stressed out because she's got so many. And then we've got a new student that doesn't know how to do school, so we've really been working on that, yes.
And what's the feedback, if any, from the parents, do you have any?
Um, I can get some, but I, I think the, the, when, when I went out there to watch, I think the, the feedback is the, when you watch a, a student be excited to come to school and they're sitting there with their book and a teacher is working with them, it, that, you know, that's what we do. And so you can, you know, and, you know, we don't, we, we're looking at grades. We've been a, a waiver-heavy district where we just file a waiver and we keep putting the kids in there. But that's not what's best for kids, that they're moving in at all areas. We've got to teach them what school looks like and welcome them in their language. I know some of the counselors have been over there just helping them understand their school and what this is like being in a different place. Yes, and so.
And in school.
And with that, there's some trauma with that, so they, you know, it, we've worked on all of that. So it's been, um, a good place to start because there is so much space at Ferno. So Lori Parker took that on.
What's been the feedback from the principals that the kids started at?
So say they, like, say they showed up at Sheffield, then there's a communication between, okay, we need to get this. And the office tells them, like, we have a program, we need you to go here. And they take them the first day and we work with, you know, meet the parents and, and all of that. And then we get them lined out and so far, it's been great.
It's a principal recording and it feels like it's taking the pressure off those teachers?
I think the, off the, yes, off the teachers. Because we can't, you know, we have a tendency to say, okay, well, we can file a waiver, we don't need to hire another teacher. But that's not, there's more than that. There's also, we, our job is to educate the child too. And, you know, I call it onboarding to some degree because we want our kids to know, what does it, what does the school look like?
I could see that really helping the middle school and high school too. Because, you know, they're a different age.
And we're working on that as well, especially at Polk, so.
Yeah, it's not to say that there aren't secondary at the high school level, it's just the biggest population is coming in as the little guys.
The little ones, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, once again, we're kind of going back to where we were at the very beginning, where the objective, uh, for the facility master plan and the work that we're asking you all to, um, come alongside us or we'll come alongside you over the next number of, um, weeks, um, is just to be thinking about really the capital investments, the opportunity that's before you. Um, I know the VOC will be talking about this, as I said, um, and how we can be thinking about, um, how best to serve children. You guys, as I said before, you're in an, in, in an enviable position. I know it may not feel that way sometimes, but, um, I really appreciate, you know, where you are. But you really do have that opportunity to think through, hey, we have changing, uh, population, we, we're steady. We're, you know, we're, we're pretty even in our elementary and our middles. We have a little bit of challenge at the high school, but not, not, not catastrophic by any means. And so how do you seize this time, this moment, to have, take the time to think about what you can do for your kids with the money that you have kind of up on the shelf, so to speak? Um, and it might need to be redeployed a little bit differently, but it does provide you the chance to really think thoughtfully through how that redeployment can really benefit your operation budget. Um, revenues sometimes feels very, very finite while expenses seem to keep kind of creeping up. And so we want to balance that out. Thinking about educative, educational adequacy, do we have the right spaces for the students? Do we have the right pre-K spaces, like you were saying? They require smaller shelves, they require bathrooms, they require X, Y, Z. Um, and so that investment in different buildings, um, for the purposes of different learning spaces is, is critical to think about educational adequacy and who we're serving. Equitable access to highly-resourced schools. You know, if you spread your dollars out so far that you're not really thinking about how you're balancing your operations at these different buildings where utilization may be lower and, and other places utilization is higher, you know, there's, there's an inequity taking place. Because the money is associated with that little person, if you're at forty-five percent utilization at your building versus eighty-five percent programs, um, enrichment opportunities are going to be very different at those schools. So how do we balance that out to make sure that all kids have access to great resource, um, spaces, learning spaces? And then finally, really putting in on exactly why you went out and sold your bonds to begin with. You're looking at how do you bring your buildings up to standard? And those conditions moving forward for the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, this is an opportunity to seize. And I think, um, you are truly in a position you may not think you are, but it is enviable. You don't have many people around you that have money ready to spend wisely and thoughtfully, um, with the opportunity to right-size yourself and put systems in place that are going to benefit kids. So that kind of goes back to effective, efficient use of our taxpayer dollars, our fiduciary duty and our partnership with our taxpayers, that we have this opportunity and we need to answer those questions that Tara, you had, um, about like what happened? And then how do we move forward and make sure that doesn't necessarily happen again in the next five years, thirty years? Who knows, but the purpose of, of how we are rebalancing ourselves. And with that, um, I think we are open to questions, discussions?
Uh, well, I want to go back to what Illyana said. Um, when we talk about highly-resourced schools and we talk about educating our pre-K students that we're getting now, um, probably the number one factor when you're dealing with our students that are coming from different countries is they need experience in learning. So our mindset tends to go to, here's the classroom and here's the desk. But little kids need the experience of learning and background knowledge. So you have to think of, you know, we can take a classroom and put desk in it and say that's pre-K, but it's a different learner that we're educating now. And so I don't want you to think that we're saying, okay, this is, we're just going to build all new centers. I think we can do multifaceted ways because we have kids that want to pay for pre-K that can access to a computer and, you know, they may already be reading. But then we have another population of our students that need a different type of learning. And those are the things we have to think about.
Exposure.
Exposure. And so I think seeing the centers and as you said, you know, our students, you know, that, you know, may, uh, another district that's comparable to what we need to see so that we can accommodate all of our students, that the ones that want to pay, that don't want to go to another district, and also the ones that need that interaction that our classrooms can be built for. So, um, I think about that when I think about, you know, we talk, we throw these terms out, resources and support, but what does that really mean? We really have to understand it as a, as a, as a team, so.
So I think the, you know, the underlying theme is, you guys had that opportunity, which you saw before you and your taxpayers, you know, blessed, um, way back, which was, you are trying to raise up all kids and experiences for all kids. And so how do we thoughtfully raise up, trade up, um, into our spaces and our facilities the most effective, thoughtful, wise way that we can? And that's on you with guidance from your bond oversight committee and your administrative team and us working alongside and giving the best that we can, advice that we have. So we're happy to discuss any questions you might have or, um, I know we had questions last time and you can always collect more and send them back on over to us, we're happy to do that.
Corey, for you, um, obviously something, um, triggered, uh, a new that's on program, capacity, the square foot, capacity utilization analysis. So the difference in those numbers, you're comfortable with this surplus capacity guiding and driving our decisions?
Yes, ma'am, I, we felt like, as, as David mentioned earlier, it's a more conservative approach, which we felt was appropriate. We also felt better about using the current standard that we would build new for to look backward. So if we would build new, we're looking at the same standard for facilities as we are when we're looking backward at our current facilities. So we felt that was the most appropriate approach. Does that answer your question?
I think it does. I mean, the original number was alarming, to say the least.
And we, and that, and, you know, we looked at it, we thought about it, we, you know, we thought, and that, and that's, that's why it's taken a little time to generate the, the report than it would have normally because we wanted to go back through because we felt like the square foot was more appropriate and we wanted to take that time.
And the other part to that was also how do we give ourselves breathing room? Right, so if, if we sat back and we looked at that, like you said, it was an alarming number, it was a big number. And then you're thinking, oh, well, if we consolidate these, this, this, and this, and this, do we have enough space and, and room, um, to honor the populations that are coming through our schools? And that gave us pause as well.
And for teacher here, too.
Exactly.
And we're, we're not, you know, we're very, the construction team is very serious about supporting how we want to teach. We're not trying to hit a specific, you know, we want to support the instruction that we want, how we want to do instruction, which is typically moving towards more flexible models, which means moving furniture around, you need a little more space. And so we really wanted to respect that as we look backward and as we look forward and use the same metric.
I want to know you're comfortable.
Yes.
You want that noted. Okay, thanks.
Additional comments about you?
If you have any, oh, go ahead.
I, I do have one comment. You were sent some information yesterday and I apologize for the lack of, in that communication. It was not pre-meeting information, it's information that is to be reviewed later on, those data points. So after you've seen all this tonight, you can go back and look at what was emailed. If you really want to drill down into the data, you have all those data points. Want to go ahead and hand out a sheet that Cory and Chris put together for you? And it has the key takeaway from tonight, talking points, Q and A, and the timeline. Can you condense down to three pages?
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions, appreciate that.
If we could take just a short break while we transition. We're taking two and a half.
All right, time's seven thirty-seven. One more week for me. Mr. Dan.
Thank you, President. Matt Phillips. Um, I'm just returning everyone. Uh, first, again, this is Carla Stassi. She's she was with us two years ago as our Director of Finance and left us to go to Prosperite. We and it was it was actually a big loss for us and took a lot of rebound from that. And then, you know, magically a spot opened up recently, so we begged her to come back and she's accepted, so.
Actually, it was a great opportunity for me and Abby to come back and see the team in my team.
How many years?
Five.
So we're here five years now. We like to have awesome CTEs. Can this just come back?
Welcome back.
She's our new director.
Welcome back.
Okay, so tonight we're gonna do a quick overview of where we are with some just like what did our budget analysis for y'all kind of put it in perspective. Uh, we'll talk about what happened in legislature and some budget considerations that y'all will think about for our next budget workshop. So just kind of overview of the board, as y'all know, y'all about three different budgets for us. The general fund, the community service fund, and our debt service fund. Y'all also approve each of these funds by a functional category, which is the second part of the fund. So this is how the this is how the functional categories break down. Eleven's instruction, twelve's library researches, forty-one's us general administration. See all the different departments that go into the part of twenty we all approved every year for us. So part of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget update, as Wolfert was saying, we are down, I mean, it looks a lot, three hundred sixty-five, so this is a lot, but it's point four one four percent of our total enrollment. So we are kind of holding steady. Like they talked about big time, every special pop we had is up even though our general pop is down. Uh, our special populations are going through the roof, which is mainly the full language kids and the special ed kids. Uh, attendance is trending upward, which is a lot of stuff y'all have helped us kind of promote to get the kids back at school to get it going more often. Last year it dipped about ninety point one, was our lowest point last year, and this year right ninety three point six. Some news, as you know, everybody's property taxes are going up, that's just for the district because the actual goes up. Uh, one thing that y'all talked that we talked about with y'all is our Sharers funding. The federal government did a self audit on themselves. I think we told them that from the eleven, twelve fiscal year, which is twelve years ago now. And they decided some of the reporting was off, so they decided to fine all the districts who reported how we told them for it back eleven, twelve years ago and cut our Sharers funding in half. So we file all the appeals we can have and doesn't look like we'll be anything back, but there will be some some cuts in our Sharers funding. Y'all did do, we we did do a cap a cavity salary study and um but y'all approved a little few percent raises with equity adjustments to kind of get us in line for it. We hadn't had a salary study in a while and obviously when that happens, we start to fall back when other districts start starting moving forward. So we did the salary study and y'all on the basis we gave to the great two percent raises and with equity adjustments, as I said, with the staff, that was the thing to keep them lower than a three percent to the market for this area. Um, y'all did this, decreased our unemployment rate for tax payers, which was part of the House Governor's price compression. And I'll talk about a little bit more in a second. And y'all did real large, they featured the sixty thousand, which y'all already felt was a something that we can see in high profit instead of fifty nine nine, or still not sixty yet, so sixty was a good marketing tool for new resources to recruit kind of staff. So a little more historical, back in twenty nineteen, eighteen nineteen, I remember we did adopt a deficit budget.
Talk a little louder.
Sorry, I get accused of talking too loud, so.
Now you can stop.
Okay, so back in in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year, we did adopt a deficit budget as a district here in CFP. And coincidentally, that was the year before the basic allotment had changed after being six years of being stagnant. So you can kind of see we're in the same spot. This is our fifth year of a basic allotment not growing up. And how we're funded, as you know, we're funded per child per day. So Carla now is her new job as Director of Budget. You got to figure out how many kids we have and how often they're going to show up to school. And that's how we base our revenue projections. So, you know, we're only one of six states in the entire U.S. that actually is funded off of ADA. All the other forty-four states budget off of enrollment. And the other thing we ever got from the state is saying, well, I don't think there's any incentive for teachers and principals to want the kids to come to school if you if you paid on enrollment. So, you know, we kind of said, why don't you hang out at Cactus for a day and see if that's really the case. So that's not the case, but really, we're only one of the six left in the entire U.S. that's still basing on the ADA. That being said, like I said, we hadn't had any grades in the basic allotment in a while. We did get SRA funding due to the COVID pandemic. And with the SRA one, two, and three funding that came out, we were awarded fifty-nine million dollars that we'll have spent all fifty-nine by the end of this September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Again, something we did this year because we did adopt a deficit budget for the first time in six years. Like I said, Carla got right on it and said, welcome, let's go and start having budget meetings. So we hit the ground running and we met with all thirty-eight campuses and, you know, it was over seventy-plus meetings in departments that we tried to coordinate this last month and a half since she started. We're about done. We've met with everybody one-on-one. We we thought it'd be a good thing to go to their campus, our department, kind of meet with them, sit in their world, and kind of hear what their requests are. We took everybody's requests and had kind of wanted to hear if they thought if they thought that they worked within the budget they had, if they thought there'd be more. But more is it was more along the lines of calling it, if there's something's coming up, like fine arts would say, hey, this is our year for band uniforms at Crepeview, so they would ask for a budget for that year. So we're trying to work out plans like that with all the campuses as well. They're awarded, campuses are are based on their snapshot enrollment for their for their budget. And also we have multipliers if they have more equip biz or DT and there's factor that that factor in for each department. So we explained that to each campus. And kind of heard, you know, from their side that they want it and they think they need it from us and make sure that they all knew that we're here to support them. You know, we told them it hasn't been raised to the basic allotment in five years now, but, you know, we want to make sure that they feel like they can ask us for anything they want. Because, you know, we told them no matter what the basic allotment is, if the kids aren't showing up, then, you know, nobody's getting paid, none of us have a job. So we wanted to iterate to the campus at the principal, but hey, we're here for you guys. If anything you need for kids or for staff, then, you know, ask us for it and we'll make sure we can make it happen.
I like that. I do that too. Like, what a great opportunity it was to be able to meet and follow them. And I think it was really important to kind of get that relationship and um and we had great, I I think it went well. And another thing that we did that that really didn't mention is we actually went through what their budgets, where they ended up last year and where they are currently this year. And so that they could kind of see where they were and um and and that helps us monitor the budgets as well as we go along. And um and they were just awesome. It was it was really great. And I thought we got a lot out of it. It was a lot of time, but I think I think we did get a lot of angle and it just helped us further the budget.
I think we only have maybe five or six meetings left.
Not that many.
Yeah, we're at the finish line.
You're down hill's up.
We're on the downhill part.
So Carla and Larry, what were some of the things other than band uniforms that you saw consistently that our campuses felt like they needed that wasn't put in their budget?
Campuses, um, like I said, they they were all really, really positive. The one thing they said sometimes like the PTA bought them like a new poster maker. So they hadn't, now they got to buy the poster paper and the ink and little maintenance preventative things, all that kind of stuff. They they didn't have that kind of stuff built in their budget, but they they seemed to be able to pay that well enough. And a lot of them had a lot of money left over. There was there was a couple that were really sharp with, hey, I, he gave you this much, I'm spending it at a hundred dollars. Some had money left over. So we tried to explain how the state works. Like, I told them, hey, this year you get your blue checkbook and we give you, say, thirty thousand dollars for your campus. So we said, you use that checkbook all year long. And what's left, whatever left in that checkbook at the end of the year goes to the district fund balance because TDA makes us zero off that checkbook. If there's, if you overspent, then we got to take from somebody else's checkbook or the fund balance to cover that that overage. So when that year's over, now your blue checkbook goes away forever and now you get a rep. So we kind of explained how their budget works and it's not just, hey, spend, spend, spend until it's all done. It's spend what you think you need to spend. If you're going to run over, like, stuff always happens. And, you know, if there's something they needed, they would call us to ask for additional funding. We asked them this year if they'd work within their budget if it works. And and there was no campus really even close to their to getting their budget spent and there's only two months left in the year. So they've all planned for, you know, to come back in August to to finish out the, to start their new year. So there's be some expenses for the September one budget hits. But they're all, like I said, it was it was a really good thing for us and it was good for the principals because they wanted to just to talk. But I think there was not really anything they were lacking, but we made sure that if there was something, to let us know. Like the poster maker was the main one, I think.
That's interesting. Paper copies.
Paper copies. Yes, they actually said it was a big waste because there's stacks of papers every day in their copier. So we actually rolled out a plan with um with technology where they're, we have a couple of test campuses where they have to take their badge. So they can send it to the printer. They got to go to the printer and swipe their badge and then their their copies will print. So but sometimes the I've heard principals say that they'll print sometimes two or three times and they forgot they sent it to the printer. So but so they said they copy everyone who looked at these.
I think another another good point too, it was it was a way for us to like um explain different things and 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 try to get a consistency throughout the the campuses and answer any questions that they that they had about certain things, especially like the the new CFP accounts where we're giving them a certain amount per staff member and that kind of things. We had a lot of questions like that. It was a good opportunity for us to kind of be consistent and and make sure that we're doing the same thing across the boards and that everybody follows that, that. And I think they were really, um, I think it was a good tool for them to 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 voice what they things they had.
Yeah, she's right. I think once the the kind of dust settle, we was like, well, I never spent that much on my staff, you know, but it's it's theirs. So now they say, well, we can leave it in that pot. And at the end of the year, we still have a couple thousand left. We can use that somewhere else where it's needed. So I mean, like, I think everybody went really, really well. One did beat, but. And the rest went pretty well, I think.
Well, you also went to departments as well.
We went to every department, every campus, even the small departments. I mean, we even met with Chris and he's a brandy department. So we're trying to make sure everybody has the allocations they need. Like I said, we're kind of excited to to get the budget. We've been scrubbing everything we can, scrubbing from. Like, we we told the campuses, since I've taken over as CFO, we've absorbed five full-time employee positions just in just in our wing alone. And three of them were full-time CPA positions. So they were full-time professional positions that we've absorbed. And I tease Collins, probably she came back and we're putting more on every staff member. But we thought it was important to to kind of model what we think we should do as a as a district and as a startup. So we absorbed some positions that we thought we could, you know, we had papers stacking up everywhere, but that's one day. Stuff that we can figure out later. But we thought it was important to start that way and then we can work our way out from administration to the departments and to campuses. That's where the need is. Is there any question so far? Okay, so this is the the slide I showed y'all last year and it just shows the inflation rate. You can see the our our cup is what we get, our sixty-one, sixty. You can see the inflation rate has gone through the roof, CPI and the CPI Texas. And you can see our, you know, even though our property taxes have grown and everything's gone up, our costs have gone up, the basic allotment has not gone up. So y'all were asking last night, I just, because more property taxes mean more revenue to the district fund. The answer's no, it's zero. We're going to get one more set, even though the property values have gone up. So this graph, the graph kind of shows you, hey, we stayed level with our funding and actually even gone down. So that's where we're slightly declining enrollment district. So we're actually making less revenue than we were several years ago. So this graph, the graph kind of shows, and we stayed level with our funding, it actually even gone down, so it's like we're slightly declining enrollment district, so we're actually making less revenue than we were several years ago. So it's a good graph to show you how it looks. So this is our snapshot snapshot day enrollment um for the past twenty years, you can see, and we peaked in the early eleven, twelve year. And we've been slowly declining the last three years, but it it looks bigger than it is, like I said, it's a point oh one difference, so we've been holding steady lately, and with ADA things rising, it it does look better for the district. So our fund balance, like I said, our our big blank checkbook that you do at the end of the year. So our operating fund balance, they all say we wanted to get grow in alignment with your increased uh appropriations. So we want to make sure that we have enough to cover our operating expenses that are always in fund balance. Currently, our fund balance at the end of the fiscal year was a hundred and forty three point nine million dollars. And T E A recommends two months of expenditures, which is about forty seven point six million dollars for us, because we spent a little over twenty three million dollars a month on budget. Um, we have a personal go in business office to make sure we have at least three months of operating expense, which is seventy one and a half million dollars. And as you can see, with hundred and forty three, almost hundred and forty four, we're we're a little over six months of fund balance. As as a district, and you can see, this is the graphic, it kind of shows how the fund balance has increased every year. We had the jump from twenty to from twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, that was during COVID when we had a all the whole whole heartless um ADA accounts, we've got to keep that number. Kids were coming, since we were shut down as a district, our costs went way down, so we were able to to sustain all that money absorbed into fund balance, and you can see we continued every year. Red gold mine shows that two month of operating expense that T E A recommends, and you can see we're well above um that rate.
So kind of push for that, so what is it then, that had a more than three months of fund balance?
Especially with us, because we're such a large district, like I said, our payroll is nineteen million dollars a month, so if we didn't have, if we don't get the funding from the state and we don't get our tax fixings early, we use technically the fund balance to cover that cash flow. So we have to, and that's why T E A recommends at least two months, so you have cash flows in your bank to make payroll, to pay bills. So that that's why they would have had at least two months, and we, like I said, we want to keep three months first, but we're well over six months at this point.
But I guess I'm asking, like, why is it beneficial, beneficially more than three months?
For for liquidity for us, because, like I said, we have different investments and stuff where we have to be liquid to make, should we make payroll, which is nineteen million dollars a month, and expenses a little over two million dollars a month, and we spend over twenty one million a month. So we had to make sure we have a liquid uh balance in the bank, which is all just our fund balance, that's our cash in the bank. So we can use that to cover payroll to start making our big tax collections and big money for T E A.
It's a free year, easier on emergency, if you were in an emergency situation, I mean, just like, you know, what do they tell us personally about?
Six, six months.
Six months, so.
Larry, hasn't there been no, but hasn't there been talk of the state watch, could potentially watch that, and if they see that, they could step in?
Oh, absolutely, they like, I do feel like there's terrible assault on public schools and we're not sure why they're doing the different things they do. The talk they're saying is, um, so you have, and they've thrown around six months, they've thrown around a year, like, if you had more than six months fund balance and you can't take out, or you can't go for a bond election until you spend down to six months, they might do it a year, but, you know.
Okay, so that's the threat is that they won't let you go for a bond election.
They won't let you go for a bond election until you spend, until you spend your money in the bank.
Okay, they're not like, going to take your money.
No, they can't come to turn it, that's our issue.
I think there was even talk to, you know, I think they did an analysis of how many districts had fund balances and it was like, that you're asking us to raise the allotment, but you have available funds. So there's been lots of different conversations around funding, it's, it it I kind of relate it to a campus, you have an activity account. And then you say, well, I don't want to use my activity account, I want to use the campus account, so it's, but you want to use it for good use, you know.
But we don't feel like sitting where we're sitting is going to cause like the red flags in Austin to go off.
Well, well, when we did, when y'all approved it two years ago, we assigned some of that fund balance.
It's still a conversation.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we have some, we have forty one and a half million dollars of committed fund balance, so that puts us in the three to four month range, we still have all that free and clear.
Can you remind us what's, like, what were the types of expenses that were committed as a part of that? Because I'm not sure all the board was here when we did that, is it A C payments?
We did, yeah, a lot of it was H VAC units, some it was for payroll, because we knew this, when that F T D grant was going away, there was this click that was going to hit us, and it's here now, but we did assign some for personnel distribution just in case. And like I said, H VAC unit was one of them, uh, technology upgrades is another, but we assigned, we we assigned forty one and a half million dollars of fund balance.
So that helped people that are newly.
If you have a assigned to a specific reason, um, it it's almost like it's accounted for, so you want to have it assigned to something.
Yeah, so the legislature's saying they'll they'll attack the unassigned fund balance, we're at three, because we got to create the H VAC upgrade.
Are we looking at any new assignments?
Not yet, like, so we're still hovering around a hundred million dollars, we, I think the state, like Dallas, is the um about the hundred and eighty six million dollar deficit budget, but their fund balance is almost six hundred million. So the state's looking at districts like that, we have sixty million dollars, but you want to take a seven hundred million dollar bond, I'll just spend some of that. So really, they're hurting the smaller districts, but if they're in that larger, they have these huge return dollars.
How do you spell?
That's kind of the, it's a small bit, we're like.
Just being good stewards.
State doesn't change, you've got to use it.
Okay, again, the the legislative update before House Bill three hit back in twenty nineteen, we had a T R D and our tax rate was a dollar seventeen, which is why we were able to build such a healthy fund balance. Um, the state has compressed the tax rate every year, and this year it was seventy eight cents, you can see we're down almost forty cents, which is good for homeowners, because the and taxpayers, because the rate that they pay to the school districts has gone way down. But the theory that the state will make up that difference, that thirty eight, that thirty eight cent difference the state is supposed to make up. But since they put the property values through the roof, you're actually paying almost the same tax you were paying with the higher rate. They did increase the home state exemption, which um we'll read you some numbers in May. Um, in the beginning, I remember our recapture, we predicted to be around fifty seven million, and then during the special legislative sessions, they they have the the exemption from forty thousand to one hundred thousand, which took our 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 actual tax collection way down. So we're prepared for our recapture payment to be somewhere in the ten to twelve million dollar range, maybe a little bit lower. So that helps the recapture payment that we pay every year, but obviously we're taking forty something million dollars less in tax collections. So that's something that we'll bring to you next week, and there's supposed to be a balance, and we'll talk about it in a second.
So that's new from September because of the appraisal cap?
Yeah, we kind of, we knew it was coming, but we thought there would be at least a basic allotment also, so we weren't allowed to make any changes to the budget adoption until the law actually passed, maybe passed on one of the special sessions, so. It also, you know, reduced the appraisal cap, you know, that they only allowed districts to go up to an half percent, even though they allow ten percent to be pocketed out, otherwise, so it's like, this is another hit on school districts.
So Larry, the net effect on revenue is zero?
The net effect shouldn't be zero, um, not to get in the weeds, but the state has said, well, you know, we raised your stakes, your s- your school stakes to your grant that was ninety seven two, we gave you like twenty eight more cents, which was, you know, forty something thousand dollars for us. So they said, we're going to take that forty thousand out of your old harness for the home state exemption going up.
Oh, okay.
They're just trading.
Yeah, so we're not gaining dollars per dollar, so we're still waiting.
So we didn't actually get a win three?
No.
No, not yet, they're supposed to define home state as by the law.
That's zero.
That's zero.
Obviously, the big thing was an increase to the basic allotment, but that was part of that House Bill three also was the raise the T R S contribution the district has to make, which, pardon, like I said, our starting teacher's sixty thousand dollars, so we took that and it's roughly six hundred and sixty dollars more than we have to pay towards the T R S as a district that the employees will pay for the district has to pay. So our costs went up about two point three million dollars having to cover those costs that the state uh put on the district to to cover from now on.
Wait, can you go back to that sort of thing? So we didn't adjust what we were giving on the, that's T R S, not benefits.
Right, that's our, that's our contribution back.
Because we did that like two years ago, right, where we increased the benefits to teachers?
Yeah, we increased our benefits to teachers, and now, yeah, now we got to increase the the payment to the state.
But that was different. Lovely.
So it's been it's been a type of employee, it's been a type of employee a little bit, but we got the block, we took the block a bit.
The state.
And then they're. That's what I said, you meant nothing, I mean, two, three, three days, six cents.
So again, the basic allotment is sixty one sixty, um, that's what we get if the child has perfect attendance, and that's been the the same since twenty nineteen. Again, we're funded on ADA, so every day they don't show up to school, that's sixty one sixty starts to go down. Um, and there, like I said, there is a way to fund for C T E's bed, equalness, kind of value pool, and the state does, you know, give us our golden pennies and our copper pennies. The golden pennies um are based on Austin's tax rate, so we get a hundred and twenty nine dollars for, we get eight golden pennies that were allowed as a district unless you go out for a T R E. Um, and then the copper pennies are forty nine and a half of a of a normal rate, but those are subject to recapture, as you know, we're a big recapture district, so. We try a little over five, five point eight, I think that's our current total. Okay, so we have a quick pop switch for you.
Let's do it.
Do this, come on, is it by Kahoot?
Where's your buzzer?
Yeah, where, where's Kahoot?
The buzzer.
It's like almost like a family meeting. Okay, so I want to tell the name for the twenty four, twenty five year, what do you think is a a top budget priority for the district funding, y'all support, since y'all have approved it.
Balance budget.
What did you say?
Balance budget, okay. Compensation. Education.
That's not number one? Oh, you're not telling us.
So yes, um, obviously salaries computation is the biggest one, um, I'm sure y'all heard the news, some people are doing raises, some aren't doing raises, it seems like more lean towards doing the raises. Lino said, we're going to do three percent, and we're going to take out a fund balance, because the state has let us down, and we're just going to buy people with, oh, by the way, we're closing ten campuses, so. They're, you know, they're, you know, it's just what it is, like I said, salaries are an important part of teachers, are the bulk of our staff, it's eighty two percent of our budget. Um, and, you know, something that we seriously have to consider, what are we going to do for staff next year? Some districts are doing no raises and closing campuses, some are doing raises and closing campuses, some are just doing raises and taking out a fund balance, so it's something that we have to think about, y'all have to think about, what do y'all do for for the staff?
Cream cheese is three twenty five a bar, it used to be a dollar, that's crazy, how can you not give a raise?
So Larry, do you have an estimated amount of how much you would have to take out of fund balance for raises?
I was just going to say.
We did like three percent.
I kind of read your mind, I did, I did.
Yeah, we, we have some of those numbers coming up.
Oh, they're coming out, so they're.
Like I said, like I said, long, long, long term of financial stability, we, we're always, we're always working three fiscal, in three fiscal years. This last year, that's been closed already since August, we still don't have our final total, so T E won't give us for another four or five months at least till they give us what our actual final numbers are, they just take a lot of doing. Obviously, we're working, in the current year, we're we're watching the budget and expenditures and revenues, and what I, like, here tonight's our first meeting, talk about next year, so we're always kind of in three years, no matter what day of the year it is, so. We're always thinking long term financially, how do we keep it? Obviously, the main thing is to make sure we have that liquid balance, we talked about how do we keep paying our bills? You know, the the reason a lot, we pay on the twentieth, because we're such a large district and we we have huge tax base, but school districts always pay on the twenty fifth, I don't know if you've heard that. And the reason districts pay on the twenty fifth is because that's when T E A funds every district in the state, so they do payroll on twenty fifth. I know, you probably know, DeSoto ha- has had some issues, they they weren't able to pay, like, you know, sometimes you have Christmas or Thanksgiving early, districts would pay early because they're liquid enough to do it. DeSoto wasn't able to vet it, wait for T E A to pay on the twenty fifth, so it's important that we keep that long term image in state, to make sure we're liquid, to make sure we have money in the bank to make sure we can pay our bills. So that's obviously a future priority as a as a business office.
How does this affect, we've just approved teacher contracts for the coming year, and prior month, we approved administrative contracts, those have raises in them. So have a react back actually set a raise about?
Not yet, you you approved um the the person to come back, but not the amount. Once you approve, if they're, y'all want to do a raise this year, once you approve a raise, then we give it to H R, they start to start to make the offers, and they have till forty five days, teacher do before the first day of school to accept that offer or resign. Which is like, what's important, if we're going to do a raise, to let them know where to use, where to resource, and that last year was really, really difficult, because the legislature wasn't doing anything, and they kept saying whatever, something, and they never did anything, and a lot of the districts got, um. Like I said, they had to, they had to sit and wait, and wait, and wait, because it's in the legislature to say, if they give a raise to the basic allotment, then by law, seventy five percent of it has to go to teachers, or thirty percent of that seventy five has to go to experienced teachers. So if we were to give them a raise prior, uh, raise the basic allotment, then we would have to give all teaching staff double raises, which is good for them, but it would have been, we would have been back in the same boat with us in, you know, financial wise, so. That's why a lot of districts were forced to wait to to do those raises. This year will be a little easier, because it's it's a non-look stable year. Um, like I said, with long term, um, we think about a long term financial stability, we all just got to think about salary. Like I said, if we're declining enrollment, we got to say, do we, you know, we've got to watch if we're just hiring people blindly, if we're hiring different departments, different teachers, we've got to make sure that we're letting them the right way, keep an eye on that with human resources.
Can we go back to the first bullet, though, the target fund balance level? What do you mean by target, like, who's target?
Yeah, like I said, the state recommends two months, two months of operating um expenditures in your fund balance, we have a target here, just the CFP that we made for three months, to make sure. So if we have to start hitting fund balance, if there's no raise to the basic allotment, and we still have a declining enrollment, if we do hit fund balance, we want to make sure that before we do something else, we make sure we're at least three months, even though T E A recommends two months, we're going to say we want it to be three months.
So that's the, y'all's target?
Yeah, let's make sure it's a good one as well. Obviously, some other priorities are safety and security for the kids, um, like I said, the state has done some things, but, you know, they give us fifteen thousand dollars per campus and twenty eight cents more, which is about five hundred and sixty four thousand dollars, we got of new money. But as you know, to to put a armed security officer at thirty at different campuses was about two and a half million dollars, so it costs two one million dollars, I think we'll have this this initiative, so. Obviously, that's a priority for us, to make sure we have the personnel and the things we need to keep the kids safe. Uh, technology is another big one, because when the connectivity grant hit during COVID, they gave us this money to replace all these systems, to buy hotspots and all this stuff for the for the kids to to learn remotely. But what it did is threw us off the replacement cycle for all the, you know, smart boards, TVs, the art computers, the students' computers, the different things like that, technology, so. We got to replace everything at once, but now everything's aging out at the same time, so we've been working with technology to kind of get a replacement kind of kind of spread it out, because everything's aging out in the same year. And obviously, we can't buy thirty million dollars of computers in one year, because that's, we just can't handle that. And obviously, capital improvements are another thing the district has to do, which, right, Mr. Hill's here at night. We need school buses, we, you know, we've been putting it off, because we haven't had it, the district fleet, um, just to let Mark speak on this, but the district fleet's a lot aging out, um. He told me the other day that they spent almost two thousand dollars to fix up a truck that's probably worth five hundred dollars, just because we can't replace it, so, but we need the truck, because we need, we need to use it, so. So just different things like that, um, fine arts, like I said, the instruments have never been replaced, we got with Mr. Rur and had him do kind of this replacement plan, we did have a good plan, we're going to build it into his budget. But there still needs to be a little bit of jump start to get him, you know, back on the right track where he can replace instruments um on a regular basis.
Do we provide instruments for every child? Do we provide instruments?
Not for every child, right, we do for the ones that need it, or we buy the large, uh, tubs, but the kids won't buy it, they buy saxons or clarinets or keys, they buy those all the way, or we buy the large stuff for the, around the, around the.
And I'm going to ask Mark a question, how many school buses do you think we need to start with to replace?
I've looked at three different options, and we spent a couple hours yesterday talking about it. I think right now, we have only bought uh about, in the last six years, about twelve buses, so I think we need to buy a minimum of about twenty five.
And are they still a hundred and forty apiece?
They're a hundred and forty today. Right now, there are.
Forty thousand.
There are, the school bus industry, almost every one of them has just come out with like a new model gear. So they keep a bus for about five to eight years, so right now, the new model gear is about a hundred and seventy five thousand, but I just talked to the guy today, because I know we're going to have a meeting, we can still buy the old model gear brand new for a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars. So we need to buy about twenty five to thirty five, if we had a perfect world, we'd get about thirty five buses, we still have buses that run every day from two thousand and eight. And how that affects, and I'm not trying to take up time, you know me, I talk, how that affects us is a lot of the systems that are on those buses, air conditioning, I mean, it's a lot different between two thousand eight, two thousand twenty four. The efficiency, uh, we have some of our white fleet, uh, we're, we have a truck right now that has been out for two months and will be out another three months, because they had to find the part to that truck, because it's twenty two years old somewhere on somebody's warehouse shelf in East Juhang. I mean, it's just not, parts are not readily available, uh, white fleet struggles very much so, uh, as far as 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 doing that, but I could go on for hours.
Well, can you explain to them what white fleet is and what we use it for?
Yes, white fleet is anything with maintenance and operations, security. White fleet is anything with maintenance and operations, security, uh, some athletics, uh, some technology, warehouse. Uh, a little bit, we just took over fine arts, uh, Mr. Mercer's kind of helpful, and Mr. Morris too, but we kind of brought, everything that has wheels in the district is now in transportation. So we found, like, we had to rebuild all of our band trailers this year, all the, the hubs, because they had not been maintained for four or five years. I mean, we literally, one weekend, I spent at two-thirty in the morning, I was on the phone trying to get a mobile truck up because we had a band competition from a football game on Friday night, it had to be back on Saturday morning. And we replaced that one hub three times. But it, it's not anybody's fault, it just, it hadn't been maintained, nobody had done that. So, uh, white fleet, maintenance and operations has struggled, uh, technology really doesn't have anything. And I'd be more than happy if you have time and another one to go over the whole program. But what we've also actually done is take some of the white fleet that we need to replace and repurpose some of that into technology and athletics that don't put hundreds of miles on a vehicle, they put ten a day. And to where we're not just getting rid of, because a lot of times when you sell, like a bus, if you sell a bus right now, we have probably eight buses that are gonna go up for auction and about eight white fleet next month. If we get five hundred dollars out of a white fleet and a thousand dollars out of a bus, we really will have done something. A lot of times you get through three hundred bucks.
Well, they're not.
But some of that is, like on a white fleet, we got a truck over there that's got three hundred and some thousand miles on it. I mean, they're probably not worth more than that. So it, we have a bus right now, in fact, I drove it this year, it still has the manual arm.
Oh my gosh.
It was funny, they were all embarrassed about me driving, I'm like, no, that's what I learned to drive on, it's gonna be me. But, uh.
And creating that replacement cycle, so we're not gonna get hit every year.
What we're talking about right now, because we haven't been on a replacement cycle, and I've been talking about this since I got here implementing it, is if we do this one-time capital improvement, it will give us about a three-year breathing window. And then, uh, Larry and I can build into our budget a replacement cycle so that we don't get hit with this again. We, we kind of, in my presentation last week, we kind of got with a perfect storm because when we took it back over from Dallas, we just took whatever equipment they had. Well, Dallas has not really been on that great of a replacement schedule either. So that's why we got, you know, we have a hundred buses we run every day, and we've got ten that are three years old.
Yeah.
And that's, if, this year, our maintenance cost has gone up, I think twenty-two percent or twenty-five percent. Not because, not just inflation, but when you're driving a, a two thousand and twelve bus, there's more stuff you have to do on that. When you're gonna do a PM that's got a hundred and eighty-nine thousand miles, it's totally different than if you're doing a PM for twelve thousand. You have to look at brakes and axles and seals and kingpins, and I, I mean, it's, it's just a whole, it's a whole, it just really raises the maintenance. And, uh, Mr. Blair, uh, we've talked about this a lot, in maintenance and operation, uh, inflation has gone at seventy-nine percent in a personal level, on maintenance and operation, it's gone up twenty-seven percent through the years. When I got in, back in the transportation management, five years ago, you could buy a bus for eighty-eight thousand dollars, that was top of the line. You could get them for about sixty-nine if you bought some of the cheaper ones. Right now, the cheapest one you can get is a hundred and forty thousand.
I just wanted them to understand what that means.
Absolutely, I just.
No, thank you for being here for that. Okay, Larry.
He's why we have crunking, eh?
But he's why I have crunk, calmness.
Yeah, exactly. Can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Um, go ahead. Um, forgive my ignorance, but out of curiosity, are these buses gas fueled or electric?
Diesel, diesel. We have, we won a grant for electric buses for four. Since the time we won the grant, that would only interpret to two and a half now because the cost's gone from two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to four hundred thousand dollars for electric buses. And when we won the grant, uh, Kim Moore, actually, or Kim Jones, who was our, uh, kind of our parts clerk, she handles all of our money for, uh, the shop. Uh, she and I did it, she did it, I didn't have it, I signed the paper. Uh, when we got that, Encore was very, this was when the big craze was going on. So Encore had indicated to us through a couple of different, uh, things that they would help offset most of the cost of putting, bringing power here and then putting in the chargers. Uh, each charging unit that would charge six buses is about four hundred thousand dollars.
And then snow again, and number ninety-nine happens and you can't.
Exactly. Well, you know, here, here was my thing about that, I, I'm not, I'm not for electric buses, I'm just not against them. If we got a grant, get four new ones, and Encore's gonna pay for the charger, we're out a hundred grand, yes, we're doing. If we've got to be out of all that, it may not be worth doing. And then in talking with the power, I haven't really pushed them a lot because the power guy said that in three to five years, they're already developing a new battery. Right now, the battery in the bus is about twice the size of two of these tables. It's really seventy-eight thousand double A batteries. In three to five years, we're gonna come up with something that's about ten to twelve sizes. So.
I know.
In all reality, depends on where you fall on the side of it, they actually think hydrogen is probably gonna overtake electric.
I mean, are you?
This way, I am full of useless information.
Thank you, Mark, I just, I really, you know, when we talk about budgeting and safety for kids, it's transportation, you know? And when we put our kids on a bus, we wanna make sure that we're taking care of them. I didn't, I knew that probably most people don't know how much a bus costs, it's expensive.
Well, I believe you saw that accident that happened a week and a half ago in Hayes.
Yeah.
Where the concrete pump truck, that, there were eleven kids thrown out of that bus, there was forty-nine students, uh, ten teachers. Only one child lost their life, and the one adult that did it was in the car behind it, went up underneath the bus. The school, a new school bus is the safest form of transportation in the world. It really is.
With the seat belts, yeah.
Yep.
All right, Mr. Here. Okay, thank you, Mark.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so just to wrap it up, so when we do, if we take capital improvements, the way to catch these things up, obviously, there's two ways to do it. There's fund balance and there's bond money. We have some excess twenty-eighteen bonds, that's something the, kind of push around your head if you wanna. And we can get you some numbers, like I said, we're trying to trim mark down and make sure what are your absolute needs this way, if we wanna do one of these options. That's, we'll do the same thing with that way, same thing with fine arts. And we can get those numbers too, but just so that if you wanna do these capital improvements, that's one way, that's two ways to do it, either bond money.
Is athletics more about the, the fields in the stadium, or is it about student uniforms, or is it about?
Athletics has a laundry of those too, they have Creekview tennis courts, they're sinking, uh, Rancho Smith tennis courts, they need resurfacing. We're out of Title IX compliance at, uh, Kelly and, um, Turner softball locker rooms, that, we talked about that last time, the standard. Then, uh, Polk Middle School field and track, it's never been redone, the entire time the school's been there. And each of the high school tracks need to be resurfaced. When we were out at, uh, preview at the dedication, you probably saw in term one, there's a asphalt, and there's a scrape so bad in term one. You did that with your spikes, it's all sparker, it'll fall, and then you look back, you can see the way even the bulges in the tracks at each of the high schools.
I think some of that was helmets too, right?
Yes.
But again, that's not a capital expense.
Yes, safety.
Go to K go for a.
Well, I think that's not a capital expense.
Like I said, the twenty-eighteen bond, there's, there's money there, there's, um, that we got from investing the bond when we had it. So we're always looking, every month we look at, see when we can refund bond, which is kind of refinancing to lower the terms and lower the rates, so. Anytime we can diffuse that, that money we already found. So, comments? So for twenty-four, twenty-five, you know, y'all have options to think about, one percent, two percent, one percent. The one thing on y'all's side is we could do that recent task, the salary study, which put us in line with every district in our area. Um, we've got us, you know, in the top third in, almost in every category we have, which, you don't, you don't wanna ever leave in any department or five teacher salary, you wanna be in the top third. Um, if we are in a budget crunch, we do offer longevity pay, which y'all know every five years, or service that next year you get. If you're here five years, that sixth year, you get five hundred dollars, if you're here on the eleventh year, you get a thousand dollars, and it goes up and up and up. I think last year was about seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of the paid longevity pay, which is a great incentive again for our staff. But it's something to consider, we really wanna tighten the reins. We do transportation, an incentive, which I think is really important, it's not a whole lot of money, but it's just something, a cost we do, it's, it's minimal, I think it's forty thousand a year, so it's not significant at all, but I think it's a really good incentive. And I, I put it there to show you that our dividend pay, we're, we're seriously looking them out. You saw, uh, things we have fifty-year teachers here, we have fifty-year employees that are custodians here, but they just don't leave. And I think it's a great incentive to keep this, the, the people we have inside to definitely. And we also do, um, leave pay for retirement as part of, I think the CEO of the policy at the Board's approved, where we pay them, I think it's up to five thousand dollars of, of their, anytime that they've accrued, if, if they retire, and y'all that have proven left, y'all as a board approve that leave pay. So if you wanted to curve some of that, then they will take a board amendment, y'all should approve this.
How much are we paying for pasta in there right now?
I think last year was about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So it's always two big points, so it's not a lot to you, but it's also, if we want to trim down staff, that, we, we give them the option to retire and make endless incentive to you. And it maxes out at five thousand. Think about as well, and y'all can imagine. Again, the, you can see that each salary has been raised over the last several years, and now it's at sixty thousand for this year, so. That's something to think about when y'all start thinking about each salary. The technology upgrade, like I said, is a big thing for us as well because of the, the connectivity grant that came through and everything that we have to do to, to kind of get everything back on cycle, same as the instruments, same as the buses, same as the white fleet. You can see, um, we pushed a couple things back to twenty-twenty-five, and we'll see how, how it goes, but you can see twenty-twenty-five, we're looking at nineteen point seven million, and we can't move things back any further. Which this year, I mean, for twenty-four, it'd be eleven point one. We're kind of, still working on, obviously, where we can, the, the stuff we can hang on, the stuff we can keep, um, at least another year or two to kind of absorb some of that. What I said, it'll be a, a basic, a basic allotment, and that'll alleviate a lot of this pressure on the building for the technology upgrades. So we're gonna do the capital improvements. Okay, so when we met with all the departments and all the campuses, like I said, and that's why we told Mark, someone spoke to me, we told every campus or department, anything. So you can have anything you want, you can have any, so prioritize what you think you need, which can best let's give, you know, to, to the budget. So. We'll take a quick break, and during the break, after we get up to move around, um, I would like for y'all to kind of rank all the parties we gave, we'll just take the top parties. The top parties are, and then rank, you know, right down to top three, and then right on top three, this is where we go back for our budget meeting, and we come back with a solid plan for y'all to look at and evaluate.
It's the top three that we gave us?
Or they could be different.
Or they could be different ones, that's for sure.
Because I would, I would rather those be labeled budget recommendations
Okay.
for business office priorities, because they were not, unless they tie out to those items we put on sticky notes last year's budget workshop, where we said, look ahead for next year's budget and the priorities, because.
Yeah, that's why I purposely didn't slide away before, so that it's not to your mind's sake, you can say, what are my top priorities, what I think, I wanna do as a board for the district? And just, like I said, just brainstorm the, the top items you want, and see people writing and talking, and then we'll, we'll take those down and take them back off that one evening. Thank you. But this is some heavy costs that are hitting the district as well coming up. Our liability insurance is going to five point seven million dollars next year, which is what we're estimating at this point. So it's going to go up now to one point three million dollars. Now, so the utility costs have gone up. Everybody knows you pay more for your gas, water, heat than electricity, but electricity is going up.
Can I ask a question about utility costs? I have a distinct memory in my mind as a student of the turn the light off initiative.
We do have a new, a new energy management guy. And we're, we're getting meeting with them to talk about, hey, I turn off your lights, you know, you might be no refrigerator, no refrigerators, all that kind of stuff.
I remember as a high school, it was like even the kids knew it.
Well, and I think you have to do an audit of classrooms, cause you don't realize when every teacher has their own microwave and refrigerator, how much that is costing. And I don't think we've ever done that. And, you know, it's great to offer that, but when it starts eating at your cost, we have to take.
My part is if we have to charge the teaching staff, they want to have a refrigerator.
The memory is correct, and that's kind of some of the things we're looking into.
And also the stadium lights turn the day, like, why are the stadium lights on during the day? See that a lot. I'm just wondering if there was something special.
In advance, cause I've seen these ones on in the morning, but it's not how long we get here.
I mean, like standard stadium.
Yeah, so I think, I think they.
I think Chris can look in back, cause it may need to be, I mean, timer maybe off, I don't know.
Okay, sorry, I was just.
No, you're good, you're good.
I just vividly read it.
So again, this is the insurance cost. You can see since there was, since there's been no change for the last place to lock. We used to pay one point eight million for liability insurance for the district. And as you can see, it's going to go, it's four point four this year, so it's about a hundred and forty six percent. It's probably going to go up to another thirty percent this year is what we predict, because you can see we'll have twenty nine, and then it dipped after that COVID year, then it's twenty eight, and it's thirty again, so we predict. The wrong indication is going to go up about thirty again. So you can see the sharp rise in insurance costs that we have to pay as a district. We are exploring what it would cost to self insure, like if we just start putting, instead of paying five point seven million dollars a year, we start paying four million a year and just start putting that money to kind of front balance account. We can just start insuring ourselves, we don't have to pay some charge now, but we're starting to create that kind of option. So this is kind of what we did already. Just to kind of identify the work priorities, we will start to go through all this, start to get a conversation going together, and we'll come back with some solid number twenty or kind of next.
Wait, can we see what we all said? Cause we didn't really, like, that was our individual thoughts, but when will we look at it together?
We can read it right now, or we can put it in the board memo if y'all want.
Do you want to read it or memo?
Well, I guess my question is, if we all have different priorities, how are they going to go use all seven of our priorities if they're not common? I mean, what do you get?
That's fine.
Yeah, I think.
Right, you're right.
Compensation, compensation so far has been everybody's number one. So compensation was first.
I think I know my one, two, and three. I mean, I can, can we just say them?
Yeah.
So my one was compensation. That includes either longevity pay, transportation side bins, what else was in there? Then, you know, the extra stuff.
Yeah.
Um, two was to Kim's balanced budget. Three was the transportation. Four, I said, remove technology as a priority. I mean, we have to make those expenses. It just needs to be a recurring amount every year. I thought we had taken that out of priorities years ago, but it just needs to go running. Even if we have to, if we're off schedule, it still needs to be recurring. It's not going to go away. The replace, it's not going to go away ever. Um, and then, um, uh, cut spending on programs to know what's successful. We don't know. Cut it. Cut them.
So in the last two, I'm sorry, I missed it. Cut the.
Cut spending on programs. We don't know what's successful.
I agree about.
I, I mean, just tired of talking about it.
And we have Regent Tang coming in to do an audit on all of our programs. So I think they're coming in two weeks.
Two weeks.
That's good, but.
Yeah. We'll get there in a second.
So y'all can check.
I, that's pretty much what I put. I think I put capital, the capital improvements was number two, and put compensation as number one, including all of the things you listed, like the TDA, transportation people and all that.
And what was your three, balanced budget?
Yeah, I only have a three, but that was.
Three.
All, all the things. I want to spend all the money and then also have balanced budget.
That's true.
That's true.
Does that work at home?
Cause I haven't figured out how to get that to work at my house.
I, I put compensation was number one. I did transportation capital improvements was my number two, because we have to have safety to get our kids to a high school. I put number three, that we're going to look, find a way to incentivize dual credit and dual credit teaching. We, we pay staff bits for AP and we have a bunch of people who are qualified to teach dual credit and they're getting absolutely nothing from it.
Um, I'm like Cameron there. I don't have to repeat.
Compensation, balanced budget, transportation. Um, mine was compensation, um, student growth. So I'm a little bit concerned about the fact that the COVID relief funds are going away and we were spending a lot of money on summer school. We're spending money on supporting kids' growth for deficits, but then also to Randy's point, the dual language programs, like in general, how are we funding growing our students in a strategic way? Cause we've identified that as a priority. And if we have students that have extra needs, then how are we pouring into them? Whether, I don't know how hefty tutoring is anymore and, you know, we got teachers staying after school to try to help kids, but we, do we need to pay them extra if they're not, you know? What are the things we can do to help growth? Whether it be our advanced learners or our students that need additional support?
I had compensation was number one, CNI was number two, which goes along with this. Like, my thought was just, this is not the time to be cutting back from spending the money to support educating our kids. Now, I agree, like.
Program, you can add that in there.
Okay.
But as, that's part of it, and I think it would be a program too.
Yeah, we need to have a deep dive on programs to know what's working and what doesn't. But I also think, like, to your point of these ESR funds that were supporting our kids heavily in tutoring and summer school and all these things, we cannot just like pull a rug out from underneath that. We're going to see our numbers, our outcome numbers plummet if we do that. So I don't think we can, I think CNI has to be, remain a focus, but it needs to be more targeted and better data to support what we're spending the money. And then number three for me was safety and security.
So I can tell you, in cabinet, we have talked about, we think everything's on the table program wise. Look, look at what's working, where the kids are enrolling, if anyone's are declining enrollment. We, we think everything's on the table at this point to figure out what's best for kids and what programs are really coming to you. We've met with one of the principals in our meetings and he said, the kids aren't just, they're not enrolling in this CD program anymore. The enrollment's going down. So we've brought that to cabinet and say, hey, which ones are working? Which ones are the kids like? Which ones are getting into school? So we, we said, everything's on the table. And that's kind of our priority as a, as a cabinet as well. We think, what's the best way to spend these dollars since they're, they are shrinking and we're not getting any more and multiple are getting more. So that is on the table as well in every cabinet meeting.
Well, it's the deep dive, it's a combination of yours and Randy's and what I know as mine that I include as a program too. And what we talked about is, you know, my shoot from the head gut reaction after looking at the data, let's just get rid of AP. Get rid of it and do dual credit, because it is obviously not serving our kids. It is not.
And if that were to happen, that would need to be board policy, because we would need to.
We have to change the GPA. GPA grading policy. It would have to be policy driven, absolutely.
But I would say, just as a parent on that, if, if we decided to do that as a board, first I wouldn't vote for it, but secondly, I would underroll my kid.
Yeah.
So I think you have, you would have the kids that are doing well and that are being the most competitive in this district would.
But that's to my point that I have always made, we are not serving our kids that are doing better. You're, I mean.
We have forty nine percent pass rate.
We have forty nine percent pass rate on AP tests, so we're not serving kids. So there's a problem with what we're teaching, how we're teaching it, the kids taking it. Something's wrong. It's not working. Like I said, it was shoot at the hip, gut reaction initial, but something is not working in that program.
I don't think they would need if we rewrote the policy to reweight the GPAs, cause I understand the fear is that.
I'd say, yeah.
The nine extra points is a huge hit on GPA, but I have two higher learner kids that have gone through our district that probably have about a fifty percent college credit rate on AP exams. And if we take that as an example of what's happening across our district, that mean, I mean, our numbers are showing that. They're passing at half rate. The numbers are showing they're passing at half rate. Those kids walked out with no college credit. But they got nine extra points on their GPA for once.
Yeah, yeah. I hear, I hear that there's a problem and I see that there's a problem, but to have the opportunity to be in a public school and achieve those AP credits are a reason why your high performing kids are here. Whether, whether they're passing the AP test or not, but that's why they're here.
But we need to figure out the problem.
I agree with that.
We're not going to solve it tonight. We're not.
No, no, I totally agree.
I, I mean, it gets, it gets you, but we're not serving our kids.
But before we cut into AP, where that is a nationally known program and possibilities for kids, I would look at cutting all the things we have at Turner the kids aren't enrolling in.
Well, I think that's why, I think that's why we're doing a deep dive into our enrollment programs.
CTE values that we spend a lot of money in.
All the people.
Right, it was supposed to be a deep dive. Correct, absolutely.
And also, you know, when you look at data, you have to ask, okay, well, why? Why are they not passing? What are we not doing to get them past the finish line? And, and it could be something as easy as, you know, when did we train our teachers? You know, when, what support systems do we have for them to pass the classes? What are the incentives for the kids to pass? Sometimes it could be the teachers not promoting it or promoting it in a certain area. So those are all the responsibilities we have as a, a district to really find out the why, and then we make sound decisions on this isn't fitting our kids.
And set the expenditures to focus on that and what's working.
Right.
Set the goals for improvement, so we can make sure that there's improvements.
Yes, cause that's what we're looking at.
It's a national test and we have state standards that aren't aligned to nationals. So there could be a gap.
There's, there's a lot of reasons why.
There's a whole lot of reasons.
It could be happening. And I agree, we only look at all of these things to see why it's not working, but it needs to work in progress.
Carol, what were your budget priorities?
Compensation and then I put student support, special needs, cut costs, programs aren't working, and of course, safety.
Does that help you guys?
Yeah.
So are there any questions about?
No, I think it's.
We won it all, right?
Yeah, we won it.
All, all, all.
Yeah, we went, we went all the incentives and cut on everything else, you know? They just show up.
Okay, so anyway, as you know, the next meetings, May ninth, we'll have some, some numbers to give y'all then. We'll start finalizing all the student count. Like I said, Carla's job is to figure out how many kids we have and how often they're going to come to school next year. Uh, we'll start, once we do that, we'll start carrying all our revenues that we'll have for next year. We'll take some of these and give you some options for you to do, staff raises. We'll start finalizing all the campus and department budgets. And I thought we were already going to wait for TDA to define what they're going to do with Ashley A. You know what that means? A residential state aid for the home state exemption that just passed, so. We like everyone, we like everyone who's in school today, so.
I was trying to figure that out and I do a lot.
I'm like a drug at Starbucks.
A residential state aid for the home state exemption, so it's going to one hundred. Um, yeah, thank y'all. This kind of didn't make sense when I put it there, but it makes sense after this meeting. All the different areas. Things change so rapidly, it does, and we got to stay focused on the future and what's best for the kids. I know, like I said, they went out nine years on enrollment projections. We do ten years as well, but y'all know very well. Only matters what's, what this year, everything could change next year or so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
If you all also think about our next budget workshop, if there's questions that you want answered or certain things investigated or looked at, please send those to me so we can get those to Larry and Carla, because they've really done a great job. And thank you so much, Carla, for hitting the ground running to visit all the campuses and departments and to give them that one-on-one, I think has been, you know, when people hear their budgets get cut, they don't know the why. And they don't, we have, so for you all to spend that time, I, I thank you very much for that. So I think those are the important things, that we're all on the same team. Where's our money? And where are we going to go on vacation? Can't go, kids. So thank you for your time.
Before I transition to the last topic, I just kind of did ask board members, Eliana is going to the legislative council next weekend. And so she has the priorities that we already set from last year, but based on this budget workshop, is there anything you really want her to focus in on?
Well, I would say, I would ask the other districts that are there, their thoughts on AP versus dual credit. I mean, in the funding and what they see and, you know, they'll have, I think that would also be a good, um, um, just get feedback from others.
The basic legislative part is, I mean, she's going to advocate for CFE, but it's pretty much the same ten that have been on the, on the legislature's ballot pick for the last twenty years.
Yes. Yes. Uh, yeah.
We need more funding. Yeah, we need more funding, you know, help us.
Get rid of the capture.
Get rid of the capture. I mean, it's all the same. I mean, right?
It's probably everybody.
Yeah.
But I also think finding funding sources for our high needs areas of, you know, what can we do? Is there any grants or funds available to help our parents become teachers that are serving our kids? I think should be a big priority, because growing our educational field is not happening with all the restraints that are put, and it's just giving our profession a not so great name. And I'm very passionate about how do we make sure that education is not just, or they don't give you funding and you don't know if you're going to get paid? Like, how do we grow our people with the help as a legislature?
Well, they're paying for the kids that are coming in to us that have never been schooled, who are requiring a lot more adult and staff time.
Yes. Yes.
And resources.
But really, I wrote it out for you.
That we don't have.
Tell our state representatives about how C, although this is not state representatives, but how CFE is being hit by the snapshot, knowing that how many students are specific. Oh my God, too many words. CFE is being hit by snapshot, knowing how many students, specifically newcomers, are showing up each month after snapshot.
Right.
So we're getting funded thanks on October.
Right.
Right on the basis.
I think it's there at the back. Y'all, do y'all want to see these? And, cause the section says, um, ADA.
Oh, yeah, I'm going to pass it down.
Get a pass down.
Change the ADA to.
To, okay.
Cause that's from that one.
Okay, I'm, I was counting on it. We have ADA, we want.
That's something where you're such.
Yeah. So you good? You have any questions, Eliana, before you go?
I'm ready.
You're ready, okay. You're ready, okay. Um, okay, well then, thank you very much. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
We'll transition to the cabinet's core. Thank you, Randy, for the video you made. Anything you wanna add?
Um, I volunteered at our last work study to take a look and do some sort of summary of chapter six. And I decided to do it electronically, and I hope that was helpful too. There are really three takeaways I would suggest from that chapter. Number one, maybe most important, is that there's needs to be intentionality. The authors of the book are very committed to the idea that we choose to be a high governance board. Uh, and so they are wanting to make sure that we keep our focus that way. Frankly, I think we do a pretty good job with that. I'm proud of this board in that, you know, we're not, the old joke from SLI or summer issue that we're trying to fight about the color of the cheerleader uniforms. And, uh, we don't do that. We spend a lot of time trying to focus on the things that are important. And they really say intentionality is a significant thing. Uh, the second thing that they really focus on is that, uh, we are going to make sure the policy and protocols match what we're doing. And that we are going to, um, focus that way. And again, I think we do a pretty good job of that. Uh, we've got good, solid protocols and procedures in place, and we need to continue to make sure that they get reviewed periodically and they get updated, but they are emphatic that we follow. And we do. We do a pretty good job of that. I'm not saying we're perfect, but they, you know, it's not, yeah. And, uh, the, the third thing that really comes out of this chapter is to take a look at how all of this fits into governance and what governance is in terms of opposed to, uh, just issues that aren't what a board needs to be about. We aren't supposed to be a committee that does this or does that. We are supposed to be the trustees governing the district. And, uh, they wanna make sure that we do that. I would suggest that the book is a little biased in that it consistently focuses on the board, which it is trying to do, but there's not a very good collaborative sense. It's kind of like, we need to do this, and we're all, we're working with, reporting to staff, et cetera. And there's not a lot of collaboration in the book. I think we have a pretty good collaboration here, so.
Anyone wanna add their takeaways?
I agree with that, and I think as a whole, we do a pretty good job. We don't have to love each other, but we do a good job of respecting each other, um, in general, I think we do a good job. To keep our focus to kids, is that what we do?
I just thought there was a, um, I mean, I agree. And we have our, I think we have our governance principles, we have our norms, and I think, you know, we have our guideline, all, all of those things. I just thought, thought the book, the role of several references. Um, obviously, we have a focus on children, um, what's best for, um, kids, but I think we, this book has a gap from a governance perspective also, from us as trustees to the community. I mean, it like wasn't mentioned, so.
Maybe we can write a chapter.
Very good.
That's the next assignment, to write a chapter.
Write a chapter. That was just my, um, um.
And isn't there a portion that talks about, um, although we're trustees, we're not a, we're only trustees when we're together, but that we should maintain that certain level of, I don't know what you call it, in, in public?
Like an image?
Yeah, thank you.
That's already one of our.
Isn't that one, I mean, wasn't that in there? I mean, I, I was just remembering what you mentioned, so.
I mean, it's already one of our BOPs.
Operating, our operating procedure, so.
Agreed.
All right. Anything else? Okay. So, thank you guys. So our next chapter, um, since we will have at least one new board member, I thought that it would be important to read chapter four next, which is welcome, maybe trustees. Um, might give us a new perspective on someone new coming into the team. And so chapter four, but then, I think, I, you guys are okay with it? Goal was to finish the book by June, which means we can start a new year with new whatever we wanted for professional learning. So we would do four and seven for the next meeting, and then eight and nine for June. That does take us to two chapters, but what do you guys think? What would you like to do?
Two chapters.
Two chapters?
Let's get it done.
Yes.
Let's get it done, okay.
Let's go.
I know, forever. Four and seven, and then eight and nine.
So four and seven, for, um, May.
Work study.
Yeah, which is May.
I don't remember.
I don't know either.
Secondly, maybe. Um, does anybody wanna volunteer to do four and seven, or four or seven?
I can do four.
You wanna do four? Okay. Anybody wanna do seven?
I can do seven.
You wanna do seven? All right. You guys choose whatever format you want? Like, the video idea was a good idea, then get it started.
I think it's great to.
It's May ninth.
May ninth, thank you, French, May ninth.
And we will do these.
Four and seven. Yep, all right. Any other questions or comments? Oh, okay. Um, well, with that, uh, will, you have anything else?
Yep.
Okay, we are adjourned at eight thirty seven. Go team.